I'm glad we enjoyed each other, but we got to have a meeting here.
Yes, sir.
Nothing like good fellowship, nothing got good fellowship. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And a great big old Happy New Year to you.
Yes, sir.
Happy New Year to you. I hear Karen Bell on there. Everybody's saying, "We're so glad to see 2020 be gone. We're happy to embrace 2021." So we look forward to great things in this year. Thank you all for your attendance and not your participation. And thank you for your support, those of you who are Liberty County. We appreciate the support you give to this Liberty County Board of Commissioners and to this whole community. I still say it's the best community. It's the best community. I think Jill Aspinwall would agree. Ms. Willa back there.
Yes.
Will agree then, the best community. We're glad to call it home. Mr. Brown has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. That's been a little bit late, alright. Pastor Richard Hayes, our good friend and brother's here this evening. He's gonna lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Please stand for the prayer and pledge led by Pastor Richard Hayes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Let us go before the Lord in prayer. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we are so thankful for allowing us to see another year. In this year, God, we ask that you would just bless us on this year, that everything that we put our hands to do, let it prosper within this community. Bless this county. Bless these leaders that are before us. Give them the wisdom. Give them the insight, Lord God. Give them good health and continue to bless them in a mighty way that they are able to lead your people in the way that will be a blessing to each and every one of us. We see everything that's happening around us. We know things that could happen and have happened in the past, and we've seen what 2020 brought us. But we're asking that on this year that you would continue to bless us, keep us, prosper us, continue to take us in a direction that you would desire for us to go. We ask you this in all things, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Let's allegiance through the flag to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Sometimes when we start a new year, we allow the Commissioners to greet the public. I know we're on Facebook Live, aren't we, Mr. Brown? So I like to say the world is watching. The world is watching. We want to extend a special greeting to our newest Commissioner. Mr. Frazier, you've been supplanted now. You're no longer the new kid on the block.
It's been a long time.
Welcome Commissioner Maxie Jones with us tonight. Good to have you, sir. If you'd like to say anything to us, you can greet us in your own way, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening. I'm truly honored, nervous, goosebumps and everything that goes along with my first official meeting representing the county. I feel honored to be amongst the honorable people that I sit up here with. Understand that the tasks that are before me, I do not take them lightly. Will honor everything that I do for the county. I would do it with respect. I would do it with integrity, and I would do it with honor. And I thank you for welcoming me amongst the Commission Board.
Thank you, sir. Good to have you. Good to have you. Hello, hello. Can we have a hello from our Commissioners on the floor? Commissioner Gilli, wanna say hello? Happy New Year to these people.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Happy New Year to everyone. I'm honored to be here too. I mean, I was, this was an election, last year was an election year for me, and it was a blessing to come on my fourth term unopposed, I might add. If you're gonna run, that's the best way to run. I like to add that in. I do wanna welcome Commissioner Jones. We've been friends for a long time. I can remember going down to Freeman Grove and beating them in softball. And, you know, he said he was a little nervous. As soon as we get the new podium and the new structure, I'll be back up there, so you won't have nothing to worry about. So thanks to everyone for coming out.
Good to have you. Commissioner Frazier?
Well, I guess I'll stand up too.
And take your mask off when I back up.
Good afternoon, everyone. Greetings from District Two. First of all, to my fellow Commissioners, you know, it's a new year. I know we have a lot of things on our agenda that we're trying to accomplish individually and also collectively. To all the people who are out here today, our elected, our Judge, Judge Aspinwall, who gets the opportunity to swear all his sin, and then our newly-elected Sheriff, Sheriff Bowman. There we go. Thank you for coming. Looking forward to your report tonight. I just wanna say that as a Commission, we work well together, and we've always put the county forward and also the best interest of the county. It's at times where we do have to make difficult decisions every year, but at the end of the day, we're doing it not just for one group of people, but everyone who lives in Liberty County. So I look forward to serving as Vice Chairman. That's a hint. There we go. But I'm looking forward to it. So thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Good evening, everyone, to Commissioner Jones. Wish you the best of luck where you sit at down there, because you are in the lion's den. I'm gonna tell you that right now. Don't listen to everything they tell you. Just lean over to the Chairman, and he might lead you right. But whatever you need, we are here for you, and I know that you would do the best for the citizens of Liberty County. And to everyone, I am actually serving my, working on my sixth term as County Commissioner for Liberty County, and I wanna thank the people of Liberty County for re-electing me each time, because apparently I must be doing something halfway right. So to Sheriff Bowman, Judge, everyone else out there, Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Drift?
Yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our Commissioners' meeting, first one of 2020, and hopefully we'll have a more better vibrant year. And I too wanna welcome our newest Commissioner, Jones. And I told you about sitting to the left. Marion just reiterated that, so I look forward to working with you. And I do thank the good people of District Three for electing me to be their spokesperson and their Commissioner, and all of the citizens of Liberty County. And I look forward to what we have in store for this year, and hopefully we'll continue and be on the right track and be good stewards of the money that these people have entrusted to us. We've got a good finance director over there that keeps us straight and in line.
Hey, Kim.
Appreciate her so much. And also, I'd like to welcome our elected Sheriff out there. Thank you for coming tonight and giving your report, and Judge Aspinwall, and all the others that are here with us tonight. I just appreciate everyone, and all of our employees standing in the trenches for us Commissioners and making everything happen around us, and for our Mr. Brown and Mr. Joseph. Thank you. I look forward to working with him. I just love his smile. But he's a good guy. We appreciate you. Thank you for coming on board, too. So anyway, Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year to you too.
Yes, sir.
And still extend our deepest sympathy and love to your mother-in-law, to you and John.
Thank you, sir.
My schoolmate, John. Alright, Commissioner Walden?
Uh-oh. Yeah, again, I've heard this, Commissioner Jones, and welcome aboard. I assured you before any of these other folks said anything that if you didn't know exactly how to vote, you just talked to me, Mr. Gilli. I mean, there's no problem. We're not shy. We'll help you every way possible. But I wanna thank Pastor Hayes, you opened up a meeting this evening and set a whole lot in 2021, hopefully, I can't say it'll be better, but hopefully we can all get together and, with this pandemic, and continue on and do the business that we have to do here for this county. But Sheriff Bowman, we welcome you. I know you asked for that job, and you paid your money for that job, so it definitely is a J O B. Welcome aboard, and my hat's off to you. But it's a pleasure to be here. I was successful in my election. I did have opposition, but, you know, that's, they say that's good. That lets you know how popular you are. So I'm back up here, and I don't do this without thinking a whole lot about the decisions that's gonna happen in the future, the decisions that's gonna affect everybody. It is a district, but we all represent one end of the county or another, and that's what we'll continue to do. We'll try to do the best job we can. Kim and Joey and your staff, Ms. Nancy, thank you for being there again and for the things you've done for me and my family in 2020. And if you need anything, you just make sure you come up here and ask us. We'll be glad to help you. But let's just move forward. Congratulations to Chairman Lovett. He's retired now, and
Thank you, sir.
He's gonna have plenty of time to be up here meddling. You'll be up here meddling around, so y'all just look for him.
Anytime.
Anytime, I can tell you. But again, thank you for being here, and Jeff, appreciate the job that y'all do.
Thank you, sir. It's a great group. It'll be nowhere else. We thank the Lord for being able to call Liberty County our home. At this time, Mr. Brown, we have some proclamations. It says, "Bring one for the chipper," Ms. Karen Bell, I guess it's Dr. Bell, and then the other one's National Schools Choice Week.
Willie, I didn't recognize you with that Georgia mask on, huh? And Willa?
And Willa. So as you already know, I have Ms. Willa. Mr. Willie Cato there on our Executive Board for the Keep Liberty Beautiful. We have one more on our Executive Board, which is Ms. Lillian Gray, and she could not be here today. We're here because of Bring One For The Chipper, which for 30 years, Bring One For The Chipper has been an annual Georgia Christmas tree recycling transition that keeps Christmas trees out of landfills and off the roads. Christmas trees can be recycled into mulch or fish habitats, and the mulch that we create here, which is on Saturday, would be used for playgrounds or any local government beautification projects, and we also offer it to individuals that live here in Liberty County. Each year, Keep Georgia Beautiful look for sponsorships to organize this recycling event, and this year, their sponsors were like Home Depot, the Davy Tree Expert Company, Georgia Forestry Commissioner, and locally, 'cause I always like to give our partners some shout-outs for Keep Liberty Beautiful, we partner with Georgia Power, who also give us the manpower and provide the chipper for the event, our local forestry commission, who we have about 350 trees coming from them this year, our Liberty County Road Department, Liberty County Solid Waste, the Borough Christmas Tree Farm, E S G, thank you so much. And this year, we'll also have our tire turn-in or amnesty, and we're a partner with Georgia Tire, South Georgia Tire Company here in Howiesville, that if for some strange reason someone was not able to read the flyer or all the information and come with one tire on the rim, they will help us by taking it out for us. So we are very excited about that, because when we had our last turn-in, we had to turn quite a few people around. So just to know that we have that assurance on our side, hopefully our event turned out to be very successful this year. So come out and join us on January the 9th, 2021, which is this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 for the Christmas tree turn-in. But if you happen to have any electronics or tires, we have that going on from 9:00 to 3:00 P.M. If you happen to come, you'll get one of our Nash's great old hot dogs, chips, and drink, plus we're giving out sealants, tree sealants, which would be Dogwoods or Red Northern Oaks sealants, and then we also have vegetable seeds and flower seeds. So we hope to see you out there, and please share the information.
What date is the tire?
Everything is this Saturday at the Liberty County Health Department. I'm not sure if I said that. So it's at the Liberty County Health Department parking lot. So you can bring your tires to turn in for free. It's called a Tire Amnesty. Just make sure they're your own tires and not a business. And then any electronics, like computers, your phones, things like that nature, we have a company that will actually recycle them and donate the proceeds, if they get any, if they're worth anything, to our local charity, which is Relay For Life, and this year.
Alright. Thank you. You got some goodies?
Yes, we do. In the back, you have some flowers and vegetable seeds, and then information about the event this weekend.
Thank you.
Now, I read about you in the Coastal Curry where you won some more awards.
Yes.
Congratulations.
We got the Governor's Award, and like in the article stated, we cannot do it without Liberty County. Our volunteers, our Commissioners, and all the partners that we work with is the star of our program, because three people cannot do it all, and our Board definitely can't do it all by ourselves. So we thank Liberty County for all their support.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're gonna run out of trophy cases.
Yes.
Thank you so much for what you do.
She sure is.
Now, is there a proclamation?
There is a proclamation, sir. This is a proclamation, Bring One For The Chipper Day. Whereas recycling reduces the waste stream, thus saving tax dollars and improving our environment, and whereas Liberty County is committed to reducing the waste stream, thus helping the state of Georgia reach a per capita waste disposal reduction goal, and whereas the Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation, the Home Depot, Davy Tree Expert Company, Georgia Forestry Commission, W X I A 11 Alive, Perry Morse Company, and Burpee Seed Company are sponsoring the 30th year of Bring One For The Chipper Tree Recycling Program, and whereas this program promotes a recycling of Christmas trees and usable mulch material and provides county residents easy access to drop-off sites. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Donald Lovett, Chairman of Liberty County, do hereby proclaim Saturday, January 9th, 2021, as Bring One For The Chipper Day in Liberty County.
Yep, alright. Alright. Thank you. We'll get that signed and get it to you, Ms. Bell. National Schools Choice Week.
Yes, sir. I think you had received an email about National Schools Choice Week. A move, I think, in the state of Georgia and somewhat on national level, but I think mainly in the state of Georgia, I guess, recognizing that people do have schools of choice and do support that they continue to have that school of choice. So they asked the Commission to adopt a proclamation recognizing Liberty County School Choice Week in Liberty County, and that would be from January 24th to January 30th. And if you'd like me, I'll read that. Whereas all children in Liberty County should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Liberty County recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Liberty County to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Liberty County, and whereas Liberty County is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children. And whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas Liberty County has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, I, Donald Lovett, do hereby recognize January 24th through January 30th, 2021, as Liberty County Schools Choice Week, and I call this observance the attention of all our citizens.
Okay, alright, so we'll get that signed. Now, Ms. Bell, you all want something for your records? You wanted a Kodak moment for your... Alright, well, if you all come here, then let's do that now, then we'll move on to the agenda. Commissioners, y'all would just come gather around, please? If you ever got a mind. Who's your picture taken? Ms. Mosley?
Oh, damn. Well, yeah, that's what I say. I'm not my man, but...
Jill Aspinwall, is there something you need us? Are you just...
I'm just here
Okay.
And I'll say amen if you say amen.
Alright. I like that. I like that. We love the amens. Our minutes from the month of December will require our approval there at our...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the minutes from our previous meeting as presented.
Second. We approve the December meeting. Any further discussion? There be none in favor, please raise your right hand. It's approved. Thank you.
Excuse me, Commissioner Jones. This is like your official first. Raising of your hand.
You gotta raise your right hand. See, this side got you. As has been stated, it's an honor to have with us Liberty County newly-elected Sheriff, Sheriff Will William. We call him Will Bowman. Ask him to come tonight just to present to us. Let me say this, Sheriff. You always on, you always have open invitation to come. We gotta have just that close a working relationship with you and your department, so there's always an open invitation for you to come. They're not having to be in this setting. This is College Joey, and we'll meet in the back and talk what we need to talk about. So don't just let this be your, sometimes just pop in. Just pop in if you want to. But we're here to work together as a team, I think as Commissioner Walden said. So just know that you have our support. We want you to be successful. You successful, we successful. Of course, I've heard you say over and over again, "It's all about the people, it's not about us." So we share that sentiment with you. So if you'll come down and say hello to us and tell us a little bit about where the Sheriff Department is going, we'd appreciate it.
Will, what he was trying to say is that door swings both ways.
That's the only way I know. Thank y'all for having and hosting me tonight. I really appreciate it. I'd like to thank God, first of all, for allowing me to be able to stand in front of you today and be the Sheriff of Liberty County. I also like to thank all the citizens of Liberty County, those that supported and those that didn't, but don't worry. The ones that didn't, I will work my tail off, that I will earn your vote the next time. I wasn't born in Liberty County, but I feel like I'm a part of Liberty County, and Jill Aspinwall told me on the day I swore in that I was part of Liberty County. I am a Liberty County citizen as of 001 on January the 1st. I'd like to thank Jill Aspinwall for being the first one to welcome me as a Liberty County citizen.
Let us say amen.
I look forward to working with each and every one of you in the Commission Board. I am a very easy person to get along with. If you can't get along with me, it might be wanting to reassess something in your life. I look forward to it. I'm very engaged in the community. I am here for you if you need me. You have anything at your church or speaking event you want me to be there with, I will be there if I can. But I will try to make every event. I've already spoken with a lot of people in the community already, so I am looking forward. I'm charged up and I'm ready to go. I've even spoken with Dr. Perry, Superintendent of the school. That's one of my key things that I want to do. We have to be engaged with our children, and that's why I'm bringing the CHIPS program back to Liberty County, something like the DARE program, but this is one that is sponsored by the Georgia Sheriff Association. So I'm looking forward to bringing that, so the kids can get used to being around police officers and not being afraid of us. So I'm looking forward to doing that. And also, I spoke to Dr. Perry about getting two more school resource officers out at Midway, because being that it is, you don't have out there, and we definitely know the world is changing, so I don't wanna have those schools uncovered without having a school resource officer out there that can go ahead and take care of a threat, if a threat happens to go that way. We don't wanna have to sit back and wait on Midway to get there, even though, just in case they're busy. So that's a couple of things that I want to do, or I'm going to do. I can't keep saying one. That's what I'm going to do, and with your help and with the school Board, we can get this thing together, and hopefully we can bring this collectively. I have already reached out to several of the agencies here in the county, along with the Georgia State Patrol, so we will be having a meeting, so we can all come together and bring liberty to one mindset in law enforcement, and that's to protect the people. I have, well, we, myself and my chief, this is my chief deputy, Max Brown. I'm honored to have him with me. He has a plethora of certifications and knowledge, and we've assembled a group of, I think, the best minds in law enforcement in the county. We have Bill Kirkendall is one of the majors we have. We have Major Edwards, and we have Major Blash. We are putting together a plan to make everyone in this county feel safe, and we're gonna work with everyone, all the community leaders. I'm very open-minded, my staff is very open-minded, and one of the things that I've already initially started is trying to change the mindset of the officers. And the first thing I talk to them, I ask them, "Who do you work for?" And every officer said the same thing just about. "They work for me." I had to immediately change that, because that is not true. No officer works for me. They work with me, and we together work for the citizens of Liberty County. Everybody should feel a part of the team. It's a team effort in which I'm trying to promote. So I told them, "If they look good, they make the citizen happy, I'm happy." That's all they need to worry about, making sure that the citizens are happy and the citizens feel like they're getting the right amount of attention that they need and feel that their needs are being withheld by the Sheriff Office. I wanna make sure everybody knows we're not a department. We are a Sheriff Office of the people. I'm gonna step aside for a minute, and I'll be back to address you, but I want my chief deputy to come up here and just to give you all a little bit of his background, so you can see what type of leadership that we are bringing to the county. Notice I say "we" and "our." That's what I like, because it's not mine.
Chief? Sheriff, thank you very much. Judge, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Max Brown. I've been a humble servant of the people of the United States for 40 years. I've got 40 years of law enforcement experience under my belt, culminating with federal department. I am an emergency management coordinator. I retired for the second time at 11:15 on Wednesday. Sheriff Bowman swore me in at 12:00. He looked at me, said I had 45 minutes rest. "What are you complaining about? Get back to work." Again, 40 years, I thank you very, very much for the opportunity to serve. At any time, I'm your humble servant. Give me a call. My office is always open, and as you see, I am available. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
As you can see, I've brought a lot of wealth of knowledge and experience to the county, and we're all under one umbrella, and we're going to make everything work for this county. I know y'all are expecting a lot of information from me.
Not tonight, not necessarily tonight.
Just gonna give you a little bit, because I only had a couple of days of transition period, that's two days. And I've only been in the office three days. So from my initial, just inspection of what I've seen, we have a lot of work to do. We have been, Ms., how would you say, um, we have not been on the proper line of what we need to be on. We're out of compliance as far as having deputies and jailers. We have, we don't have enough wiggle room. We don't have enough officers at all to be safe. And that's the key thing. We have the officer-to inmate ratio very dangerous, very dangerous. Our response time for office deputies on the road, we don't have enough. At some, at any given point on the weekend, you might have three deputies covering Liberty County. That's 70,000 people. The response time will be, what, hours? Thank goodness we have other municipalities and the State Patrol that we can rely on. I looked at a few of the vehicles, very unsafe. We had the fire chief to come and do inspections, and nothing was ever done. We had a vehicle to burn, catch on fire, already put it out, so now we got to get the, get that vehicle repaired. Our evidence room. We are a lawsuit away from getting everything shut down. Our evidence rooms are horrible. I don't see how we call them evidence room. They are just... It's, it's beyond what we need. We definitely have to address that immediately. We'll have, we haven't finished our evaluation, but those are the things we need to address immediately. The evidence room will get us all in deep trouble. We can lose our certification, especially at the jail. Those are the three things that a sheriff is responsible for. The jail, the courthouse, and the safety of the community. And we are failing miserably at two of them. That's just why my initial assessment, and that's only two days, and I'm still working on it. Give me a few more, I say within maybe, I can't put it to number. But as soon as I get everything together, I will have Chief come over and bring y'all the evaluation, what we have and what we need and where we need to be. It's gonna be a long road, but I'm sure if we work together, and I'm not saying this to be doom and gloomy, because that's not me. I'm always upbeat. I'm just looking at the positive. I just want you to see what we see. And I'm inviting every Commissioner to come do a walkthrough with me. And I can show you, because visual will let you see what I see, and then you could get a better assessment of what I'm talking about. So if I can get y'all at your earliest convenience, Mr. Chairman, and I can get everybody to walk through, and I can show you where we are falling short and where we need to be, I'd be more than happy to do that. Anytime my office is open, I can move. I'm not hurt, I'm not injured. I don't like to sit in the office. I like to move and make sure everything is working. Sometimes Chief had to tell me, hey, Sheriff, that's not your job, that's mine. I don't like to micromanage people, but I like to make sure stuff get done to standard. That's all I know. Ever since I was in the Army, that's all I know, standards. So you're gonna get the best out of me, you're gonna get the best from every deputy, every jailer, every law enforcement agency in this county, because I am the sheriff of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. If you would do your assessments and whatever time we need to do that, and write all that up, you know, and then, because no, how to say, how you eat an elephant? One bite at a time.
One bite at a time, baby, one bite.
So one bite at a time, we'll, we'll work our way through you.
That's, that's how we gonna do it, but the immediate attention of things that we need to get taken care of.
Get, get that in written form for us and let's talk about those.
Yeah, thank you.
I heard what he said about taking a, I guess, a walkthrough. Can we schedule that?
Yeah, we can schedule it. We can schedule that. Just get with Joey and then Joey will send us out a availability survey.
If, if y'all are available tomorrow, I can, we can make that happen.
That's what I'm, I can't do, I can't do tomorrow. Mr. Chairman, I did have one question, Sheriff. You said the CHAMP program is similar to the school resource officer?
No, it's different. It's different. It's like the DARE program, but...
Is CHAMP an acronym for something, or is it just for knocking somebody out like a boxer?
No, 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 no.
It's an acronym?
Yes. I don't have it right here on me right now, but I'll get it to you.
But it's, you said it, and you would put it in the schools out in the county, not, maybe not?
All schools.
All schools.
It, it, the CHAMP program, we go and visit all the schools. The resource officers are the one that stays at that school to protect the students and the teachers and the principal for any... So if we have somebody that want to go, but then sent out a threat to the school, we don't want to be caught short not having someone there. That happened in McIntosh County, and I was the one that put everything together to make sure all the kids got evacuated out of the county, out of the school, the parents pick up and all that stuff. So I have a wealth of knowledge in that. So I'm gonna be diligently working on that, because we have to change the mindset of the kids now.
Every school from elementary?
From elementary up. Everyone will get a chance to see the DARE program in action.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Will.
All right.
Mr. Brown, will you schedule the walkthrough? Thank you. Finance, Ms. Bluff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to present the November report, and I will be back before you at your mid-month meeting to present the December report. As you remember, December was, ooh, a hectic month, and we, we got our audit done. Got it issued by 12:31. Worked very hard to do that, but it's done and issued. So we picked back up on our regular recurring responsibilities, and so I just want to present to you some results of November. So at the end of November, we've collected about 26% of our revenues budgeted in the general fund, and we have exhausted 39% of our budgeted expenditures. At the end of November, we had approximately 3.7 months' worth of operational expenditures in our undesignated and unreserved fund balance. This time, one year ago, we were at three months, so we're holding strong and steady, doing very well. There are some, but there are some departments that are running ahead of schedule. A couple of those I've already discussed with you in the past. The coastal Georgia regional development dues, and the circuit-wide public defender and risk management are all payments that are made upfront in a lump sum, so it kind of skews that budget for the remainder of the year. And as I've told you, I think I told you back in October, the elections, I'm sorry, the elections department, they will run out of money. At the end of November, they've already spent 74% of their budget. So I already indicated to you, that was before we had captured the rest of the November election expense. And then this runoff election is going to hit them hard, and they have still seven months to go. And only 27, 26% of their budget left. So they will run out of money. We will have to amend our general fund budget at some point for that. Government buildings is running slightly ahead of schedule. They had to purchase an HVAC carrier for the East End complex. Superior Court, I think I mentioned to you, we pay an annual payment to the Superior Court Law Clerk. So that budget skewed a little bit, but that will come back in line. They were purchased a couple of vehicles, emergency management, building and licensing, both purchased a vehicle. So that's kind of skewed their budget for a couple of months, but we anticipate those budgets coming back in line. The road department also purchased two specific, two large pieces of equipment, I think y'all are aware of, because you approved those, the excavator and then the, the truck and trailer. We did not have a budget for the census coordinator when we came, when our budget was adopted. However, you later identified to go ahead and move forward and have that census coordinator continue to work. So those expenses that have accumulated in that department, you won't see any more, I don't think, after December. But that was only about $7,800 as at the end of November. That is shared between all of the municipalities on a pro-rata basis, so we will be billing for that. But there is no budget for that, so that's why that's over. And then other financing uses down there, you can see there's a, about a half a million dollar unfavorable variance. And that pertains to the loan that we took out for building the East End Fire Station. That, even though that's a SPOLOST project, that debt could not be sales tax debt. So the general fund had to accept that debt and then do a transfer out to the sales tax. So that wasn't really budgeted. That was something that came after the budget. So that department, other financing uses, where we actually track and capture those transfers to recreation, to 911, and this time to sales tax six. That'll be over for the rest of the year, and we will probably have to come back and amend that budget too this year sometime. Solid Waste at the end of November has a modest net income showing of about $28,000. They have achieved about 37% of their revenues and exhausted about 36% of their budgeted expenditures. All of their departments are operating within their budget parameters. Sales tax six, I think I did share this with you last month, sales tax six is looking fantastic. Our November distribution was over $900,000. That was fabulous. And so collectively, to date, since the program started, we're about $876,000 ahead of schedule.
Yippee, yippee, yay.
I'm saying. Now, and, and again, the November distribution represents the October collections. So when I come back before you at your mid-month, I'll be presenting our December close. But what you'll see is the November collections that are reported in December. And then finally, a new report for you is your T-SPOLOST. Now, we have budgeted, we actually, we did kind of two budgets. We did a max amount of $54 million, and T-SPOLOST is a five-year program. And so in order to cap, in order to accumulate that much money, we would actually have to achieve about $873,000 a month for the first 12 months, and then build that up every month after. So it looks like we're running slightly behind schedule, about $151,000. However, again, that was the max amount to collect. But we did our budget based on a reduced figure, so we're still in, in real good shape for that one. And this only represents one month of collection so far. And I imagine at your planning session is when you will determine the priority of those mandatory projects, and then how you want to divide up the Liberty County share for T-SPOLOST projects. So that's why it looks, it looks very simplistic right now, because there isn't a whole lot to it. But it makes it easy to read. And that is all I have at this point, unless somebody has a, yes, sir?
I have, and, you know, I think every month, and that's a real good thing, that we seem to be ahead of schedule on the, on the SPOLOST. And I, I remember hearing something, I hope it's not true, but it probably is, that if we, the referendum called for raising, let's say $54 million or whatever that was, if we reach that before that time, it ends?
Yes, it stops. Right, right.
Just as a note, though, when, when the city, when Kim Ryan and Kim got together and did some, a lot of looks, a lot of different things, and trying to estimate that T-SPOLOST revenue, we bumped that up substantially.
And that's why we did the T-SPOLOST at $54 million, based on the fact that sales tax six was doing so well. You know, if you'll remember, the first year and a half, we really didn't think we were going to hit that $54 million. And all of a sudden, COVID hit, and I think everybody just, I, I don't know what happened. Everybody started ordering stuff and... Toilet paper. Cleaning supplies. I, I don't know. It's, it just, for some reason, the sales tax has really done well in the last year and a half, to the point where it made up that deficit and has exceeded now our actual budget. So we've got a little cushion if something happens, but you're correct. If we hit that $54 million before the end of the six years, no more collecting.
Mr. Chairman, the, Joey did mention about the hangars. Are we gonna need to have any money designated for that?
No, sir. Actually, actually with the state contribution, and you should get that contract probably from the state sometime in the next few weeks to look at at a meeting. The state ended up putting in more money than they had initially proposed, so the hangar rents should take care of the total debt that's going to be required on that hangar.
Well, now, we were, of course, when we started it, we were using the fuel capacity that we got. But so right now, we have increased, from what I'm understanding, more traffic in and out. Are we gonna need to address that? And how will that be handled? Is there, they got their own standalone budget?
They do have their own standalone budget for operation. If you, if you remember, it runs through the Development Authority.
Right.
And then we participate with the city and the Development Authority on one-third cost on that. Yes, sir.
I mean, it's good if they'll touch, but we also want them to go too, so we will make sure that...
Just to also kind of give you a heads up, I know you've got your planning session coming, is it February?
They're gonna set that tonight.
Oh, okay. Usually sometime in February. We have started the process of sending out all of the fixed asset listings and the CIP forms, so that we can get your capital improvement, your five-year capital improvement budget squared away, and hopefully put together by February, because it's in February, that I then send out all of the budget sheets and the budget requests. And I will be working very closely with the Sheriff's Department, because I do know, in early conversations, they do want to take the seven departments and kind of restructure that and maybe into four or something of that sort. So there will be some, I guess, growing pains a little bit. And we also, one of the things that the auditors talked about, and I haven't even shared this with Mr. Martin, is that the recreation is going to come into the general fund. It's no longer going to be a special revenue fund. After discussing kind of how that was set up, why that's set up, it just makes sense now that the Recreation Department are just departments with inside the general fund and not its own separate special revenue fund. So there'll be a little, little growth going there too, a little transition on that too. But that'll all take place in the February, March timeframe, and we'll be gearing up for those budget workshops and sessions that we all like so much. It's kind of where we are right now. Any, any other questions I can?
Not necessarily a question, but Joey, I remember a few months ago, the governor was saying that he was going to try to find some funding to help counties with these election overruns. I hadn't heard anything else about that.
Have not seen anything on that, Mr. Chairman.
We, we did get the, the one CARES funding, the $30,000 CARES funding that pertain to the elections.
Early on.
Early on. That was early on. That was maybe back in September or October. Nothing since then.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a lot of requirements. I don't know if anybody actually went in, voted in person. I mean, there's, they're wiping everything down and, you know.
Yeah.
It was, yeah.
Just the personnel cost alone.
Personnel cost alone, added personnel cost, not the normal that we used to have. And I think that's one of the reasons they're so over budget.
Over budget.
Well, we did get reimbursed for Midway. Wasn't that an election that we held?
That was held in conjunction with the...
Yeah.
It was really not, because it was held in conjunction. The precinct had to be open anyway, so there was no extra cost for...
I thought they had a city election?
Well, they did, but anytime there's a national election... Well, they did, but anytime there's a national election, the, the poll workers and the polls have to be open anyway. So any municipality elections that are held in conjunction with a national election.
There's no charge.
There's no charge. Because we have to be there anyway.
Yeah, no extra charge.
No extra charge.
No, we do have the, I heard the school boys having their east plus election in March.
I haven't heard anything about that.
I know, we were thinking it was quiet too. But it's coming in March from what we heard a few days ago. I know we'll, we'll recover with that one.
So two more cities?
No, the east plus.
For the, for the Board of Education.
To renew their east plus.
Education SPOLOST.
Midway has an election this year too, though, I think, for, for, uh, mayor and council. But, so that would be
Four, now that, if it's
That would be separate.
That's correct.
Any government agreement.
That are separate would be.
Mm-hmm, east plus has two. All right, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Let's, let's go for a million.
When I was asked the question, I had to make sure I get it right. Um, I was addressed about what CHAMP stands for and I, you have to blame it on the, on the head, but not the heart. Stuff going through my mind and everything, some things will slip, I'm, I am a little older now. CHAMP stands for Choosing Healthy Activities and Methods of Promoting Safety. And, uh,
She gave it to me right after.
Okay, and, uh, did she give you CHAMP's, uh, mission statement?
Yeah, all that's in there.
Okay, all right, well, I'll just want to put it on record. CHAMP's mission statement. To provide an educational program for Georgia youth, which provides guidance and the skills, ability and knowledge to be safe, healthy and happy in preparation for a successful life.
Okay.
So that's what CHAMP mission statement is and that's what CHAMP is. I just hate not to be able to answer the question.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
We don't keep score like that. All right, we need to
It deals with mental health. And I told the sheriff, because I know that, because we all work together and his budget is going to be increasing and they talk about the number of deputies on the road. And we have the transportation problem and the hospital eats a lot. We as citizens pay our taxes on all the services. But we need to make sure that we have, uh, an agreement, a commitment, which the sheriff has says, and I've talked to you also, Commissioner Lovett, Chairman Lovett, that that needs to happen sooner than later because, as he said, three road deputies, that's been the sway for many years, several sheriffs back. And we need to create the transportation and have working, hopefully, if it doesn't cross over any laws with municipalities and the county, to be able to work together because we are at a standstill in getting the emergency situations out of our hospitals into crisis facilities because our hospital ER is not the nearest emergency crisis stabilization unit. And so I've kind of said, kept saying to the, um, sheriff, and that's why he, we haven't come off the ground, but I know I've talked to enough of y'all and you know that, you hear that from me at my budget time about what orders to apprehend and the doctor's ten thirteen. There is so much money that is paid to companies that are not doing their job and we need to have that money. The state contracts has the privatization of these companies and our counties are picking up the bills in addition to the money that's going to pay people who are not doing their job. So I want to be on record here and hope that we have this working relationship, which I feel sure we do. All of y'all want to help our citizens in Liberty County. You want to make sure that people that have mental health, alcohol, drug, the issues that are out there, maybe even bring a facility here to Liberty County so our deputies don't have to travel. Maybe some other counties want to have beds. It takes a lot of planning. The state, um, office has said, you know, for them to match the funds, the county has to put a lot into it also. And I'm just hoping that we're moving on that path to help people because we don't have a crisis center here. We're now all directed to go to Savannah and Savannah is overflowing. Right, uh, Brunswick is the same way. But what the people need to understand is, the Georgia law says when a doctor issues a ten thirteen or the court issues an order to apprehend, we need the law enforcement to transport those people. They normally go with transportation rather than just being a road deputy. EMS, I don't know when they're involved, but that's taking that away from our citizens. Those beds in the ER are taken up with people that are having problems with mental illness, drug, alcohol, and the hospital has to hire more people to sit with them. So all I can say is we've got to come together. And I know that y'all have never said no to me, but you need to understand as, as we have a new sheriff with, building his department differently and y'all are going to be listening and hearing from him and he's out there to help work with this, I just think, please, please, do what we can, find the money wherever the state has so that we can take it. I know that, and, um, Commissioner Thrift, you're frowning, I can see. Everybody else is pretty pleasant, but you've got a frown on your face, would you?
You can't see.
I can see your eyes.
It's not a frown.
But anyway, let me just say, I
It's not a frown.
Eyes off the
Mental illness is definitely a problem. I, I know mental illness.
It is so broken and I'm so tired of people saying, that's not my job. Well, I'm going to advocate for people. These are, these are citizens that we care for, everybody. It's not us, it's our county. They're the ones, they're the ones we're out here for, but thank you for letting me, I, I'll be talking.
Okay. This is tied with the judge saying, we're not the only county that's going through this. Uh, it's, it's statewide, so whatever we can do in the future to try to make it better, that's what we're, we're going to try to work for. Thank y'all for your time.
Amen to that.
Without getting in the weeds too, too much, and any, I guess I just need a yes or a no answer. We, we were talking about two different programs, correct? Am I right? Or, or all day? Okay.
Oh, yeah, two different programs.
I would just get clarification.
Two different programs.
We were talking about CHAMPs and, okay.
Judge wants just, just to be on record.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
LCPC, Mr. Gandhi.
Yes, sir, thank you. Happy New Year to you all quickly.
Happy New Year.
All right, so I actually have, uh, I guess leftover from last year. We have our, our last 2020 action is here for you. Uh, variance number 202044LC. Uh, so this went before the Planning Commission in December of 2020, so it's coming to you now. Uh, so this is a petition submitted by Henry and Cheryl Strickland, the owners, for a setback variance to reduce the setback for an accessory building, which is a shed, from ten feet to one foot at 344 Big Oak Road. This property is zoned AR1 for agricultural residential and is further described as parcel 21624. It is located in District One. Sorry, uh, everyone good on that? All right, uh, so here's a, a picture of the sign there as well as our, our legal ad. Uh, so just to get you oriented a little bit, here is South Coastal Highway. Uh, there is, uh, this is, there's Little Oak Road right here and Big Oak Road, they kind of branch off this way here. Uh, here's a little closer view, this is the shed in question in the back corner of the home. Uh, there's the front side of the house. And like I said, zoned AR1, as are all the parcels around it. So, uh, this'll, uh, this'll give you a little, we have some angles of the shed here. So, uh, this is the shed in question, like I said, there's like a little overhang here where it's built out like that as well. Uh, there, this is the property marker right here. So on, on this end of the shed, it's a little farther away. Uh, however, here's the front of the shed, just so you can get like a, a view of what it looks like. Uh, however, on the front side here, you can see this is the property marker and that's the back of the shed, just about a foot away. Uh, which is why we're, you know, coming to you with the, uh, the variance request here. Uh, so as far as our variance conditions, uh, it doesn't meet any extreme, uh, or sorry, extraordinary or exceptional conditions. Uh, the, uh, this is not, you know, particular to this piece of property. Peculiar nature to this property. Um, however, we do want to say that relief would not cause any substantial detriment to the public good. Uh, so our, our staff report is that there are, you know, no extraordinary conditions pertaining to this property. Does not exhibit any peculiarities and it would, that would cause a unnecessary hardship. However, it, it should be noted that that shed has been sitting there for over ten years with no issue. Uh, relief, if granted, would not cause substantial detriment to the public good or transportation. Uh, the Planning Commission has recommended disapproval as, in our, uh, as in our, you know, code of ordinances, um, that there are no conditions that are peculiar to this piece of property. Uh, so the Planning Commission cannot recommend approval for such a condi-, or for such a, a motion. But, um, I do again want to point out that, that shed's been sitting there for about ten years with, with not an issue until now and, uh, our applicant, Ms. Strickland, can probably speak more to you about that. Uh, but if you have any questions for me first, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Gandhi? You said it's been there for about ten years?
I believe so, sir.
So what prompted it to be?
A neighbor filed a complaint with, um, the building and licensing office, I believe. I, I don't want to dive too much into that on my own. I think Ms. Strickland can probably give you a better idea of what transpired there if you're interested.
Yeah, we need, we need to hear from the, let's hear from the applicant first. Hey, Ms. Strickland.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas. Some of you know me, um, I knew your grandfather. Your mother is a lovely classy lady, we do rehab together.
Yeah.
The shed was built over ten years ago. I have the paperwork where we had it built. And I would like to point out that in July of 2013, the property owner next door was having his property surveyed. His son was getting married, he was going to give him that back property to build a house. And upon having it surveyed, he came to me that day, my husband and neighbor was there, and he said, "We found out that where I told you to put the shed at that time was okay, but it's not. It's within the setback. But if you'll give me a check for two hundred dollars to have it resurveyed, I will give you ten feet so there's not an issue with you or my son building the house." I went inside, I wrote a check for two hundred dollars, check number 2990, on July the 12th, to have it done. I took the man at his word that he would do it. I'm at fault because I never followed up because as he told me, that never happened.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just a quick question for, for clarification. So that was July 12th of this year?
2013.
2013.
So he knew seven years ago there was an issue with the setback of the shed. What prompted the complaint? The, uh, property owners were illegally operating a commercial business in a residential area for over a year. The problem got so bad that a complaint was filed in February of last year and they were supposed to clear it up, they did not clear it up. Things progressed to where we had more traffic, more people, uh, workers molesting children, exposing themselves. And I finally got fed up one morning when I heard one of the workers cursing a fourteen-year-old neighbor girl. And I called and filed a complaint and two other people did. Subsequently, they were taken to court, they were found guilty, they were fined and ordered to move the business, which they sort of did. But the complaint was filed against us for the shed as he told me that I called and asked, actually what happened Saturday morning? He bulldozed down a fence that was put up by him that we paid for. And when I called to ask him why, he said, "Because you filed a complaint against us." And that he turned around that next day or the day before and filed the complaint about the shed. So yes, uh, we are guilty of being within that setback. But we initially spoke to him about where we were going to put the shed, he suggested that property. He helped us work on the shed. He knew in 2013 that the shed was not where it should be and nothing was ever done until we filed it, I filed a complaint against the business. And I think, in my opinion, there's a big difference between being within a setback that as was explained, doesn't cause any problem, it's on an empty lot, it doesn't hurt anything versus operating a commercial business in a residential area. So does that answer your question, Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for Ms. Strickland.
Yes.
How many acres is that property, your property?
Our property is a one-acre lot.
It's one acre, so pretty much all of those are one acre?
Um, all of the lots are set out as such. Technically, it was rezoned incorrectly.
Okay. Did he ever build his son's house back there?
No, they decided they didn't want to live there, so nothing was ever done on it.
Okay. That's, whose lot?
The neighbor's lot.
That's the neighbor to the, right up above her? Okay.
Neighbor, they actually owned six lots, they owned the whole end down there.
And, and that's, that's the shed up at the top left?
That's my little timber twelve shed.
Right.
Okay.
And, and the shed, I mean, if it has to be moved, yes, I'll move it, but it, it would create a hardship. We have the lean-to where my husband parks his lawn mower and the golf cart and it was put down with cement, some post and cement. It can be moved, but it really, I don't see that it's a problem. But yes, if, if, if you tell me to move it, I will, will have it moved. I just think it's very unfair that this has to happen now. And the comparison between going to court and paying a fine and moving a commercial business versus ten feet.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I, I guess I have a question for LCPC.
Yes.
So just to get clarification, right? With this disapproval that was, that was recommended, it was a disapproval to not give them the variance?
Uh, yes, sir, so the, the Planning Commission recommended not giving the, the variance allowance because by our books, it, it does not meet the conditions for a variance.
Right, but we've, we've had given variances previously, correct?
Absolutely have, yes, sir.
Okay, because I, I, I know, uh, you all give us this packet and, you know, we go through it about the conditions and everything, uh, and then the way how you presented it, to me, made totally sense that we leave it alone. And I don't know, I, I might be wrong. But then it also, to me, uh, by hearing, uh, Ms. Strickland speak and that, I guess, well, the neighbor made a complaint, but you made a complaint? So is over another situation? So this was
Retaliation.
Retaliation or payback? I, I don't know, this is 2021, I'm trying to start
Can I say something, excuse me, Mr. Fraser?
I'm still adjusting.
Yes. I am very proud of the fact that after we went to the meeting on this, the chairman and two other members of their board came to us afterwards and made it a point to speak to us and say that we are doing this for your own good. Technically, you are breaking the law. If we allow If we allow this to go forward, your neighbor could come build something, and what would our defense be? And I, I really appreciated them taking the time to explain that. And, and just to say that, you know, we wanted to approve it. We really, really did. But we don't want you to be allowed to break the law and have someone else turn around and break the law in retaliation to you.
Absolutely. I understand. It's, it's just, I guess I was just more trying, Ms. Chair, trying to get more clarification. And also from, from the steps from LCPC to us.
They, they were abiding by what our ordinance says.
Absolutely. I mean,
Exactly.
Our, our job with the planning commission is to read your ordinance and,
And then just go by the book. I totally understand.
Then it comes to the Supreme Court.
Right, because,
Then we make the exception if we want to.
It's been, it's been times where you all have approved, but we still didn't think, so I, I mean, I get that. But also with situations like this where it's a, I, I guess I look at it as a so-called good neighbor policies where, you know, because I, I remember when I lived in Atlanta, I had a tree fall and it fell over in their, in their yard. Technically, is their tree now? But as a good neighbor, we work some now, you know? But I, I was just wondering if, because from just a little that I've heard, I just wanted to know if you all went through like a good neighbor mediation or something, let them try to figure it out. Because saying that the neighbor helped build the shed, obviously the neighbor has visited the shed. But now, because they made a complaint, the neighbor don't want the shed no more? You understand what I'm saying? Like, I mean, can we, is there, is it, would, between the LCPC, before it gets here, with a situation like that, not just with this one, even ones that might happen in the future, is there some type of process that you all go through for mediation where, where we could sit the neighbors down to try to come to some type of agreement? I'm sorry, Jeff. Happy New Year.
Yeah, there's been a lot of dialogue here. I don't think that would be very productive to, to have the neighbor come in and have any kind of a formal mediation.
Okay. I mean, even with a mediator? You don't think so?
No.
It's worth a try, but I don't think it would be productive. There's, there's been a lot of, a lot of water under the bridge.
I understand.
Can I ask a question? Jeff, the planning commission
Yeah.
voted to disapprove because there were no extenuating circumstances. Now, the extenuating circumstance that's here is that it's been there 10 years.
Right.
If it was, if, if it was disapproved, the extenuating circumstance would be an unnecessary cost to move something that's been there 10 years. There's been no problem. To me, that's the extenuating circumstance. I know we've had trailers that have been in a place before that didn't get a permit. And we granted a setback variance because it would pose a hardship to have to move. I don't know. There's a difference between having to move this shed and move that trailer. But the planning commission recommended okay on those hardship cases. So, I mean, just a thought.
And what I'm saying is a 10-year shed, I mean, how, how do you move a 10-year shed without knocking it down?
Is, is the other party here?
I'd like to point out that he did not show up for the LCPC meeting and,
Yep. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You ready to make a motion on this?
Who's the gentleman that's, are you with the, the Strickland family, sir?
Yeah, that's my parents.
Okay. You're fine. You're good.
It's all family back there.
You're good.
That's family.
It's all family.
I, if I could just say one thing real quick. I have, and we presented this at the other meeting, of the 21 lots in Oak Creek, I have the signatures of 18 people that approve and support us in everything we've gone through.
That was my next question. Did you have any, other than the neighbor, any of the opposition?
I asked these people not to come here tonight.
Thank you.
Simply because, besides the COVID issues,
Yeah, we couldn't do it.
We have already been retaliated against more than once. And that has caused us some financial hardships. And I did not want any of these people to suffer any retaliation. And what you see here is family. My husband, his two sisters, and my son, who said, "No. We will be there for you no matter what."
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to answer your question. We didn't have any calls of opposition or concern about this case.
It speaks volumes right there. Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion.
Yeah, Chair, entertain a motion.
Yeah, I make, let me see if I can do it correctly. I make a motion that we grant them the setback that is required due to the, it being there, this structure being there over 10 years or longer. And not pose any hardship on this family.
Motion is on the floor that we approve the variance.
Second.
Second.
And a second. And for the discussion, I have a comment, kind of follow up on what Mr. Brown said, Jeff. With the extenuating circumstances clause, if I may call it the clause, I think this would have been a good, this was a good example of the 10-year issue. So in, in, so did, did LCPC, did, did your board even approach that? Consider that, looking back, I know you have some new members, looking back on some historical?
Yes, they really felt like they wanted to report for this request. But they looked at your four criteria and it didn't fit in the four, so they felt like their hands were tied. But since it's your criteria, you can vary your criteria. They didn't feel like they could vary your criteria.
They were very strong in saying they needed to follow the law.
Thank you.
You know, I just want to say something. Of course, I know we still ready to vote on it. And I, I can't remember anything ever before coming up down there. And I mean, I, I'm known, when I saw the name here, I didn't recognize who Mr. Strickland was. If he had just said Buster, I knew who it was. And then when I seen you, but what I'm saying is, there've never been an issue down there. Unless Commissioner Stevenson might know one, but for this to be happening now, the first thing right out the gate is, is a, I, I think, you know, we, we doing the right thing. I feel comfortable with us doing the right thing. It's just that for an individual to tell you one thing and, and you pay money and then it winds up in the end being like this, this is a, it's a, it's a, I don't know, maybe he might have been a good neighbor. I had never heard anything out of the way at all down there. And I've worked at every house in Oak Creek at one time or another and been there, so I'm ready to vote.
I think it's, it's just unfortunate, that's all. All right. All in favor of allowing the variance as presented? As the motion requests, please raise your right hand.
Right.
Any opposed? The variance is approved, Ms. Strickland.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Listeners, Chairman,
Thank you.
Adam Commissioner.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a great night.
Thank you.
All right.
Engineering? All right, we'll get started here.
I'll bring him down there, Buster. I'll bring him down there. Me and, me and him like to go to the first district every once in a while.
Y'all don't stay out of my district, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna charge y'all.
Totally. Mr. Long, what you got, sir?
Okay, everybody should have a packet that looks similar to this. And what I want to talk about is Soloway's Convenience Centers. We want to talk about something we got from DOT today at the end, so please don't let me leave without saying something. I don't want to get going and forget to say it. This is a, things we need to do are Soloway's Convenience Centers. Some of these items are in the report, the Culberson Report for a five-year plan to do some work on. Some will be further out. But what I want to do is present to you the things that we need to do so that you can kind of see what's coming and know that we're going to be working forward and moving toward these items. And these are in no particular order, so don't think that I've got them presented to you in any certain way. First we should have is a large drawing for Fort Morris Road. Right now, we have a lease on this property. At one, at some point in time, we'll probably need to purchase this property. So that's really all we need to do. There's no real improvements we need to make at this point at that site. The next one is the Gunbrandt Site. Gunbrandt Site needs a pretty good bit of work.
Sure does. It sure does.
It, it really does. Basically, what we'd end up doing is doubling the capacity of this site by mirroring. We'll fix some of the asphalt that's there. Some of the walls are okay. May need to do a little bit of repair. But we'll double this site and make it function a good bit better by mirroring everything. And we'll relocate the recycling area. And we have a proposed cost on this one. And we'll get to the right page in a second, of $355,000. Not really getting in the weeds right now. These are preliminary estimates of what we think that it's going to be based on these sketch plans that we have. The next one is your Isle of Wight site. This is the one right there at Quarterman Drive, Isle of Wight Road and 84. I mean, it's really, really close to that intersection with 84. We've got some traffic issues that are occurring there. It's a very, very tight site. And it's our opinion that we need to abandon this site and move to a different site. We'd like to move somewhere on Isle of Wight Road and stay kind of close to intersection.
I'm, I'm sorry, Trent. Repeat that, por favor?
Okay, the Isle of Wight site. So it looks like this one.
It says the new site, Isle of Wight.
It's right there at, this is not what the Isle of Wight site looks like now. This would be a new Isle of Wight site.
Right. That's, that's, that's what I was getting at.
So what we'll need to do is that site that's out there now is very difficult at best. So we want to look for a location and then move this site. Keep it in the same vicinity, but move it.
Couldn't we go back further toward that dirt road, Missy Holmes Road?
Yes, sir. Well, there's some places right there you can look for.
And that would take it right out of that dangerous intersection right there.
Yes, sir.
That's possible.
Yes, sir. You need to be China in the general, general vicinity.
Right, uh-huh.
You don't want to be too far back. Like, we don't want to go all the way back to the 77 acres we own back at Jones Creek. That's too far.
No, well.
But, you know, we want to be somewhere close, so.
But like I said, if we keep moving back to the, toward the Missy Holmes area, let's take a look at that and see what we can come up with that.
Yes, sir. I've got a couple of things that I've looked at as far as suitable sites that I can bring to you as well.
Commissioner Stevens
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Long. I'm being reminded of the negative vibes from the Trade Hill site, from people in that community. So I think you'd better yourself, talking about being neighborly a few minutes ago, but look at a site that's not in anybody's neighborhood. And I don't really think that the Jones Creek is that far. Why, you, you sound like it's five miles. It's not, it's not really.
It's just, it's what we'll, it's my, it's my opinion.
Yeah.
And so we can look at the different sites. It's just a long way down there.
Yeah. And I'm reminded of the folk that came that night from the, so division. I'm thinking, I'm hearing them in my ear. But we have county property
Right.
that's not totally out of the vicinity
No.
that can serve the same purpose. We ought to at least consider that.
Yes, sir. I, I, I think we should. I mean, and we can. It sounds like I'm contradicting myself. But my point is, what I was trying to do is make it as convenient as we could for most of our customers that use that area, which is closer to that intersection.
I understand.
When they're taking the trash, trash out at certain times, they're going that way. It's on their route. And so what I'm focusing on is areas that are convenient for our customers.
I'm focused on the, the people that live on and around Isle of Wight Road.
Ms. Chair, I, I totally agree.
Yeah, man.
Especially the word convenience. That's a very opinionated statement.
Well, and I understand.
If, if you build it,
They'll come.
I guarantee you.
You're right. You're right. So we, I mean, certainly we're not ruled that out. I'm not trying to say that.
Remember we told those people that we would look out for them?
Well, what happened down there at the Sunbury one was, I think, when we really got, when I, when I really got hit was when they cut the trees.
Yeah.
When they cut the trees down. And it looks like the one in the Sunbury now will be going closer toward the church. Yeah, the one on Fort, on Fort Morris Road.
The one that, that staying in the same place?
It's gonna stay in the same place?
Yes, sir.
I thought you were extending it.
Oh, no, sure. It's, nothing's changing. We just buy it.
Okay.
So nothing will change there.
Commissioner Stevens, of course, I know it's in Commissioner Jones's area, but when you leave the curve here in Flemington, with everything that's right there, where's the closest one?
Miller Park.
Miller Park.
That's what I'm saying. So they go there a lot.
You do.
You, wherever you put it at, they're gonna go. Because I can remember, if you lived in Hinesville, you went out on JV Road to the dump. There wasn't but one.
That's right.
So, you know, let's just, if, like, you know, let's make it
Yeah.
convenient, but making it convenient is just building it. So wherever, whatever we gotta do, that.
That's, that's super. I, I didn't mean to kind of spark this kind of conversation, but good information.
Trent, this is 2021, baby.
I had a flashback.
It's great information.
Make it convenient, but make it community friendly.
Feedback on what your feelings are and where that thing ought to go, which is good. So, and I appreciate that.
And when you give people your word, try to live by your word.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. So, yes, we'll, we'll look at doing something down there and give you some feasibility on that as well. The next site I have on here is JV Road. This is toward the tail end, I believe, in this five-year plan. It's just to expand the maneuver area and add a couple of containers on it. So this won't be a, a huge change to the JV Road site. That's where all the city has all their emulsing operation is right next to us as well. We have about $220,000 to make the improvements we need to do there. One other site that we really need to do a little bit of work on is the, at the Old Landfill. We have a, there's a convenience center right there, just as you come off of Lake George area, run into Old Landfill, there's a convenience center right there. Want to relocate where the recycle center is and expand, expand the maneuver area. We can get a couple more containers there and make that site work a little bit better. Be able to give it a little bit more capacity. Price on that, about $371,000. And if you go to the Miller Park site, what we'd like to try to do is just mirror that and double the capacity of that site almost immediately by just doubling the size of that. All we gotta do is mirror it. And we would actually end up changing the driveway and doing a few other little modifications. We have about a $320,000 price tag on that.
Trent, Joey. Are we looking at putting all three of these projects together? The, the recreation fire station and the convenience center together?
Trent and I talked about that this morning. Yes, sir. Try to come back to you with an overall park plan. At the same time, we do a layout for the fire station so that we can kind of multiply the dollars there a little bit. Try to get the land prep done, probably at the same time one contractor and save on that overhead. So really would try to envision a large project happening there where this was incorporated with those other reconstructions.
Commissioner Stevens, where's the one on E.B. Cooper? The sides in the ditch, all the way to Riceburg.
Shut down. You know, we got a, what, Curbside Service down there now.
No, I'm talking about on, in that area, like on Homestown Road, Cato Lane, all that going up in there. Where, where, when you go through from E.B. Cooper all the way through to Homestown, where do those folks go? Miller Park?
No, we got Curbside. Don't we have?
I'm pretty sure they're on a,
I'm talking about the, not, not the trash. I'm talking about if they're, you know, refrigerators and stuff like that, where do they haul them to?
We would do that, we would do that also.
Curbside?
Where does it go? I mean, when did they come down there and pick them up? Or where do they, they just put them out by the road?
Yeah, they do.
By the man?
Pretty, pretty sure, well, yeah, the white goods and all would be by the man. Not just outrun. And the, the area, when we pulled up that convenience center, it was over on Retreat Road. Years ago. We had to provide some kind of outlet for those folks, and so that's why we run some limited household collection. Along that area and the one on Retreat over there. And they get billed separate. They get billed a different rate on their.
All that works.
I know when you go down the Homestown Road, the dirt portion. There's tires, there's refrigerators, there's trash from one end to the other.
Few lions down there, too. A few lions out that way, too.
I don't know.
And 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 actually, I don't think it's the people that's living down there. It's people who are coming through and say, oop.
Illegal dumping.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Joey, the recyclables that that we pick up, the aluminum and glass and stuff like that, where do, where do we take that? To Ford Stewart?
To Ford Stewart when they accept it.
Okay.
That's been a problem with them moving those recyclables, too, so a lot of time we've had to hold those. But we do, that's where.
So, I mean, if we, if our, let's say, the convenience center at JV Road, if it's, if it's running over and we empty it and we can't take it to Ford Stewart, what, what do we do with it?
Just dispose of it. We just have to dispose of it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Brown, you know, since we're talking about relocating all of this. What we're talking about, maybe we might need to look at this site up here on eighty-four, on the old hospital ground.
For recycling, it'd be great.
Right up here, where, where, I think, Ms. Brenda.
Well, you know, you were holding, yes, sir, you, you've been holding that area for a health department. That, that's what the commission, and certainly whatever y'all want to do, but y'all had talked about having DFAX in the health department, diversity. There is, is almost like a.
No, I'm talking about where the, where she, where the.
Yes, sir, uh huh. Yeah, you talked about, you've talked, you've looked at a layout before to lay in a health department in there. It would be, use the same kind of drive and stuff as DFAX. When we laid DFAX out, you had talked about putting your health department right there, since it was on a bus route and a lot of things like that. That is what you've talked about using that for.
We didn't look at anywhere to relocate her anywhere else right now? In this plan?
Not, not in this plan.
Okay.
This is, this is a follow-up from, as he said, from Culbertson.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, several things. We, we wanted to build those convenience centers in that five-year plan. The fee that y'all adopted that goes into play now runs all these. So it gives you that opportunity and it's staged in, as things happen in the community. And another way to say that is, we looked at the growth that was going to happen on Isle of Wight Road with that Sub Division area. So as we timed it out in the five-year plan, we realized that that movement of that center probably happens in years four, three to four, as that grows. Versus right now, because we're overloaded already at the conveni, at the center at Lake George and at Gun Branch.
Gun Branch.
And they're suffering some asphalt failure.
Yes.
And we've gotten to go in there with all the new development that went down there that Claude Dryden did at Lake George and all that's happened out in Gun Branch. You know, those were prioritized ahead of some other things, so the priorities were considered, too.
And also, the JV Road, I don't know. How much, or if there's a way for, if it's a busy.
Well, so.
People are dumping there because there's no signage. You know, new people coming into community may not even know that it's back there.
Perfect example.
Kind of off the beaten path.
I think we've got a little bit planned for that, but I think that we probably in our minds think that may be annexed into the city of Hinesville.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. Most of that is annexed.
Spend a lot of capital out there. And so that's the reason that one is pushed really backwards.
Pushed back, okay, I understand.
To year four or five.
Yeah, yeah.
And I see what happens in that annexation.
Yes, I understand completely.
But didn't, didn't that area vote?
They did. They did.
They did.
You remember, they said no, correct?
Four or four years ago, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
Anything subject to change.
Right, I understand, but I guess we could get with the city and see. Where they are, if, if they're thinking about bringing it back on.
Well, and again, that's the reason any improvements for that site were pushed back.
Absolutely, right.
Yeah.
But I mean, if, if the city aren't looking at, at bringing that back up. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't think it's being utilized as much.
I don't think it is either.
There's no signage. I don't know unless your folks are going back there. Because the city's picking up most of it.
It seems to be a pretty, you know, because we go out there from time to time, we got a wastewater plant out there and a moldering operation, but it, it seems to be pretty busy out there. I mean, it's always people out there, don't let, you know, dump it. So much recyclers, but recyclable, but, but.
Bringing the trash.
Dump mattresses and furniture and just construction debris.
Okay.
That, that kind of stuff, not cans and bottles and newspapers, not so much that, but just.
Okay.
Just a, a dump site.
Okay.
Okay.
You, you get a lot of that.
Word gets around, huh?
Yeah.
Mostly from Long County.
Mr. Long, where you going?
Yes, sir. Only thing else I have on these is we do have a site out of Peyton Rogers Road site. Wasn't any proposed expansions on that, just about eighty thousand dollars worth of repair on some of our walls. And some things that need to get taken care of on that, those sites. So, other than that, I, I really do appreciate the feedback on the location on Isle of Wight Road.
Yes, sir, please, by all means.
Yeah, like I said, I, I didn't mean to disbar everything, but it's great, great to get feedback. It's really good.
Mr. Chairman, we heard the.
Trash talk, that's all it was.
We heard, we heard the presentation now, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brown, now how, what are we going to do to implement it?
So, if you.
We know, too, that definitely needs some.
Well, so at your planning session, what I'll do is I'll bring in that, I'll try to cut down that chart sum that's in the five-year plan, because it's got a myrid of capital improvement stuff in it. And just pick out the convenience centers in that Excel, and you can see what year those are in, because the funds are going to need to accumulate to do some of that work. But you'll be able to then to see what year these are planned. I'll have that at your, at your planning session for you.
Okay, and I didn't know if, like, at the Gun Branch site, if there was, like. A road that goes in and out or just the same entrance that we currently have?
What I set up on the Gun Branch site is basically using the same entrance that you have now.
Uh huh, is it in and out?
Not trying to make a separate in and out because of the way the transition.
Right.
As I get back up there and I'm, I'm up higher, I'm like six feet up. And so it was harder to come back down and come around to another dirt road. It was easier to kind of flip the site and almost mirror the site and make a few extra changes. That way, I take advantage of all the dirt that I have up there and I don't spend a lot of money on this dirt. Elevate the site.
Okay.
These sites, who, who designed those originally, Trent? I mean, where did we go and look to see? I mean.
I, I, and so I, I'm going to do a little bit of recollecting here. So I started with it when I was working for Paul Simonson back before nineteen ninety-three. And I left Paul for a couple of years and then they were designed, or several of them were designed. And I'm not sure where we went to look at other sites and how they operated. And I do know that I did the design on the one on Fort Morris Road. Did the design on the one, and I did that when I was full-time county engineer, and I did the. One there at a. Gosh. Middle Park. And, and that was one of our only cast and place walls that we did on that one. So we, we kind of. Once we got the, the equipment and how we operate, we let that dictate how we lay out the site and how it operates. So, you know, a lot of it now is not necessarily based on who we looked at, it's based on what equipment we have and how we're using to operate it.
I know Commissioner Stevens was talking about the exit, and, I mean, you have the same thing down at Miller Park. You got one way in. You got to come back out the same way, and if the trucks in there to pick up a container, then you've got issues right there. Even on the Gun Branch site, when you pull off the road, of course, a lot of them are dirt. But in front of that place, it's, you know, the traffic continuously going in and out. Probably needs to be addressed, but I have seen other sites that are different than the ones we've got, and they're, they're not concrete. They're just, they're just rock. Crest asphalt or whatever, and I don't know if that's something that we need to look at. That's a pile of money that we're spending just on concrete in there, so. And I don't know, I mean, I, I try not to get into trash business. I, I got one of those things, you roll it out to the road and they can get up. And it's picked up, and we've done talking about all that, but the convenience centers that we've got for the recycling, and Joey, me and you've been talking about it. And that needs to be addressed on Sandy Run Road, that, whatever we gotta do there to make that a little bit more safer. And it's, needs to be where, I mean, the way you pull up, you pull in the middle, you throw it out this window and this window. But when you leave, everything's on the ground. I'm talking about household garbage, the whole stuff. So that needs to be at an area where, you know, when people drive by, they'll be a little bit more conscious of what they're putting in a recycling.
Yes, sir.
So those things right there, and I'm, I'm bringing that up because I have told Joey about it and me and him have discussed it. And my wife is a big recycler, so.
Now, we can.
Saved the environment.
That's right.
Me, too.
And I, I, I can say this, like on the Gun Branch site, some of these sites where we have alternate access, we can explore extra driveways. And like for the Gun Branch site, we can explore coming back out on railroad.
If you get three trucks in there dumping their trash, it's kind of hard to get in and out.
Yeah, I mean, and, and that certainly can be something we can look at.
Well, the, the one Commissioner Wallace was talking about on, on Sandy Run, that, they don't have, that's not for bulk trash. That's just. They're just the recyclers.
If I'm not mistaken.
But, but no, the last time I was though, those bins are pretty.
Yeah, they're about to rot down.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't know who cleans, I guess Brenda cleans them out, but, you know, they, that's something we need to probably, and Commissioner Stevens brought up a good point. I mean, if we had to temporarily move them to right there, you would have people that's out on a major highway, they may be a little bit more reluctant to. Throw their household garbage in it. They may recycle, so.
Yeah, one thing you need to remember, too, those recycled, the recycled bins we got, they're between thirty-five and forty years old. We've done like maybe one rebuild on them.
Well, they can't be that old because it was done when Don Carter was in office, and that ain't been no forty years. I, I took over from Don and then Sappy came in, so, I mean, it ain't. But, I mean, they've held up for what they've.
Right.
That was designed for.
Twenty-five to thirty years. I'm ten years off. I'm an engineer. I can't, can't add.
That's all right.
Twenty-five to thirty.
That's all right if it's just ten.
They're old and they're rotten.
You just bring us, you know, at, at our planning meeting.
Yes, sir.
And refine those things that we were talking about.
I can refine some of these and bring this to you. That'd be great.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Now, the one other thing I want to tell you about real quick that we got.
All right.
Is you got a little, take out your magnifying glass, read in this little chart you got from DOT where they're going to do some striping for us. A couple of roads will have some shoulder widening and things like that. This is a project that they're letting, and they'll construct.
Can you, can you tell me those roads? I can't see it with my glasses. Any of those in District Three?
Wells Road. To Wells Cemetery Road, actually from one ninety-six on Wells Road to Wells Cemetery Road.
Okay, I see that.
With, with all due respect, some of these roads need to be resurfaced before they stripe.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we don't really pick them.
I, I mean, I understand.
Ripe, County Line Road, Ripe Hatch to one ninety-six. That's the extent of County Line Road.
Okay. They're going to be striped?
Yes, sir. So what we'll get out of is we'll get striping out of them. They'll replace some of the essential signs that don't meet reflectivity. And a couple of roads will get some shoulder widening on it. Which is good, and they'll put a two-foot strip of pavement on either side. If you, if you read really close, there's a column on the right that says shoulder widening, and then just a few of them have X's in it. Those are the roads that have, get the shoulder widening. Now, what we're, what our responsibility is, is to clean the edge lines, basically clean the road. On the ones where we have to do shoulder widening, if there is any earthwork that needs to get done to accommodate the shoulder widening, we have to do that. Look at that, it ought to be pretty easy for the road department to be able to do that. And then we also have to coordinate with the property owners to move any mailboxes or anything like that that may be in the way before the work occurs. Which are all pretty standard things, so it should be pretty easy for us to do. The other thing we need to remember is this work, I don't think this is going to be let until like September two thousand twenty twenty-two. So we're a long ways out.
Yes, we are.
So in other words, if I have a couple of projects that I want to resurface.
Let's do them now.
And then I don't have to worry about.
You have time.
See what I'm saying? Right?
We can re, put some paint on it and then they'll get them updated.
Right, right, right. We could just do the.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, if they were on this list, right?
Oh.
Yeah, they have to.
If they're on the list.
Yeah, they're on here. Got a couple on that list. That's right. That's exactly right.
Good deal.
That will work perfect.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question. Do you know, the state, I guess, the state on Highway one ninety-six? West, they come along there and made those ripples in the road?
Wake-up strips.
Yeah, oh, my word, I'm getting so many complaints, people living on that road.
From the noise?
From the noise, and they did the center line and both sides. I think people just do it for the noise out of it. If they're going down the road.
There's supposed to be wake-up strips to keep you in your lane.
They seem to pull your car off. Some people complain and they pull the wheel.
You know, you, you don't even realize how often you run over the white line until you go down that road. And you're like, they're, they're on seventeen.
Yeah.
As well.
Yeah, and, I mean, I've noticed as I've traveled that they're like that kind of all over the state.
Yeah, they, they started doing that all over.
When they just did the outside lines, like, but now they're doing the center line, too.
They did the center.
Yeah, they're doing the center line.
But it's, it's noisy.
And edge lines.
I've gotten some complaints from it.
I just noticed, I was coming from Douglas today on the state highway, and the center lines, I guess it's Highway thirty-two, they got the ripples on the center line.
Yeah.
And they were doing that.
And I hit it. I thought, I thought I was running off the road.
Oh, well, some people think maybe they'll wear down, but I don't know.
The only thing you can hope for is that they fill up with sand.
They are noisy.
Wear down, that means somebody ain't driving right.
I know.
All right, we got, you done, sir?
And thank you very much for your time.
Um, Mr. Chairman, what's the status on Yoma's Road now? Where we at?
We should be getting contract documents back any day.
Okay.
My plan is to have them back to you before the next commission meeting. The Sykes Brothers was the low bidder today on Pioneer Road for like one forty-eight. And what they're going to do is they're going to present us a schedule of how they're going to do all these projects, because that'll be three projects. There are actually four that they've got going for us at one time that they are going to be able to get them done, because we're not setting it up to do them. One after the other, we're setting them up to do.
Halmataneous.
So, you know, I, I'll have a good schedule from them before I make recommendation of award to you guys for Pioneer Road.
Okay.
So, but, yes, sir, they are, we're in getting the bonds and all the insurance certificates and stuff like that.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin, you're so patient, sir. Last one, please.
Not quite.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to continue our discussion that was started at the mid-month December meeting about reopening of outdoor facilities. We, I went back to the original plan that we had, three-phase plan for reopening facilities, and made some revisions to it, and I believe you guys have that in your practice. Right on that, Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, sir. You have that? Okay, and, and so that, that plan shows which facilities are now closed, with some of them limited act, limited use available. The facilities that are now open, a Phase One plan for reopening facilities, which we, we underwent, we had to be, way back in May. Where facilities were opened for, for use, with requests that those users observed the rules that were put forth by CDC and other organizations. that were put forth by CDC and other organizations for use of facilities. Unfortunately, in August, it was determined that that was not being done, and a decision was made to close those facilities once again. We came back with a plan for limited usage in September. That was approved, and we, that's where we stand now in terms of use of facilities. Phase Two of that plan called for opening swimming pools and recreation centers. In June and July, the swimming pools were open, with a limited number of swimmers and other COVID restrictions. The centers were not reopened. So that's exactly where we stand right now as far as how facility usage has been transpired during this COVID situation. The recommendation for the next phase would be to reopen outdoor facilities once again, with the exception of the basketball courts and the open pavilions. Basketball courts being because that's where most of our problems were came from in the original time that they were open. Pavilions being a place of gathering, which is something that, you know, we're advised not to do. So that's what I bring to you tonight, ladies and gentlemen, to see how we want to proceed with possibly reopening facilities.
Visionist.
Jimmy, the skate park, I mean, and that's right there by Popeye's, right there.
Also, we're at Irene B. Thomas, but.
They got one over there?
There are two.
Okay. And, I mean, is there, when that's being used, is it, what, ten, fifteen people, five? What have you noticed?
It varies. You know, when it was initially opened and was new, there was a lot of usage, and there would be big crowds there most of the time. You know, over the last year or so, the usage has declined. I would say that the number you gave is fairly accurate during average times.
But I mean, I guess what they do, you get a guy with a skateboard, he'll go and he'll take his turn and show off a little bit, and then somebody will come in and try to top it, but I guess when one person is doing his thing, the group that's waiting, you know, to see him, and then when they want to get out there and do their thing, the group that's over here is kind of, what, five to ten people, kind of, and they, are they?
That's fairly accurate, my observation, yeah.
And the tennis court activity?
Tennis courts are, you know, by nature, you can only have four people on the court at one time. And of course, they're on opposite sides of the court, and split on the court on the same side they're on. Typically, there are very few spectators involved in that.
The machine and the banner.
Batting cages, you know, are quite often a site for a lot of folks to gather up. You know, when you've got four of them there, a lot of people trying to use them.
Is that, is that just like individuals or teams?
Both.
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 Okay, thank you.
Never mind, I'll wait.
Mr. Chairman.
We trying to wrap this up, Doc?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Go for it, it's a brand-new year.
Okay.
So.
We've been kicking this can down the road for quite a long time now.
Hold off.
Okay, you going? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going. So is this the, this is the new revised plan? Am I correct? Of what we're gonna keep closing, where we're gonna keep open?
That's a recommendation, based on the conversation we had at the mid-month meeting.
But I guess one of the main questions I have is, when do we, when do we decide that our numbers are well enough for us to open back up? Are we looking at it from a national standpoint? We're looking at it from a statewide, or just strictly Liberty County and Hinesville? What I'm saying is, like, what is, what is good enough for us to say, okay, we're here, and we can start opening up more things?
We get our reports from the coastal areas, this is the area we're in.
Right.
We get those.
I mean, and that's what I'm saying. You normally do it almost every day or whatnot, or I think y'all wing.
Oh, yeah, we get, yeah, the reports that come out every day.
Right, so, I mean, I guess, because you're a lot closer to it, and in your opinion, you know, I guess just judging it for the last six months to the last three months to the last thirty days, where do you feel that we are in Liberty County?
See, the holidays is throwing everything off, post-holiday surge.
Right, so the numbers went up a little.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sure.
I'm.
Yes, sir.
But I guess I'm still trying to figure out, when do we say, okay, you see, you understand what I'm saying? Like, we're a population of seventy, seventy-five thousand, and we only have a certain amount of cases. Is that for a certain amount of time, is that where we say, okay, well, we hit that threshold that we're looking at, and then we can start looking at opening up more facilities or going to a different phase? I guess that's what I'm just trying to figure out.
I'm not sure what would be the designated time period, but you have to look at what percentage of positivity is in ours is up right now. And I have to believe, inclined to believe, that the reason it's not worse than what it is is because of our management, because of what we have put into place to help it. Because if we didn't have in place, if they could be playing basketball right now, my gosh, the numbers would be much, much worse, so. So I think what we have is working, we just need to be persistent, be patient, you know, try to get through some of these peaks seasons and see what the vaccine is gonna do, all those kind of things. So I wish I could tell you, Commissioner Fraser, you know, what time period, but, you know, we'll just have to have constant communication with Mr. Martin from time to time as these things happen to see where we are, because we're thinking right now that post-Christmas and post-New Year's, get past that surge, we'll be all right. But who knows, something else may.
Right, I understand, I'm just.
Yeah, so it's hard to gauge, my friend, it's hard to gauge. I just know, excuse me, I don't mean to cut you off. I can just say from right now from what I'm hearing, and people having parties, all this, all this one-on-one stuff, that's where it's coming from. It's really, CDC says it's really not the surfaces so much, it's the interaction with people.
And I get it, but with all due respect, you know, the people who are free have been free.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've been dealing with this, I don't know if y'all know, this is January, we started dealing with this.
March.
Beginning of March, so, you know, we're still expecting.
We remember.
Yeah, I know, right, so, I mean, the only thing I'm saying is, we're, you know, we asked them to get a plan together. I appreciate the plan, but where do we find on our side that threshold for a certain amount of time, then we look at going to the next phase, instead of just, we're kind of winging it. And I understand we have to wing it, but at least if we're gonna wing it, to kind of have some type of, okay, well, if it stays here for, you know, fourteen days or thirty days, then, okay, well, we consider going to Phase Two. So we all be on the same board.
Could I suggest that we, that I talked to Dr. Davis, I know what they've used is the daily transmission index. The states use that as a guide to talk about mandatory masking, you know, the catch rates and stuff. I think that's exactly what you're after, is a benchmark.
Right.
You know, tell me what those benchmarks are for the different phases, and that may be a guide. Because they're looking to get that daily transmission index below a certain level to do certain things, and I'm not suggesting that's what it is. But I hear exactly what you're asking.
I hear him too.
Right. That's the only thing, so, if we can, I guess, get with your information, then we get with them and try to orchestrate some type of, some type of guideline, or like you said, benchmark, so we know. Then also, you know, we've been closed for this long, and I know, you know, we have employees, and, you know, we don't, and we've been blessed not to have to, you know, make tough decisions, if you understand what I mean, where, you know, we, but with all due respect, the Recreation Department has been closed for.
Shut down.
Like, what, ten months now?
Yes, ten months.
I mean, I know you came to us and said that, because we asked you at our last meeting, what are our employees doing? I know you said, you know, they've been painting and everything. With all due respect, do we have that much painting for them to do? I'm just, I don't, the question I have is this, you know, we have a department that has been, you know, ninety-five percent closed down for almost a year. You know, I know last time he came, you know, you talked about budgetary issues, and I know we haven't had to use, you know, the other F-word that governments hate to say, but again, even if we don't have to do that, we at least need to come up with some type of plan for them. If they're not managing in this, they should be managing something else. Because technically, this is downtime, and, you know, again, this is from last March. We're in January now, and we're still talking about keeping stuff closed. So, you know, we have a group of employees, you know, and I'm not saying they're not doing anything, but if we can, know what they are doing during this time, because from March to January, to me, I just need a little bit more clarification with this, with the programs, where we going, with the benchmarks, with the phases, so with this downtime, what are our employees doing? I mean, because technically, they're not doing this, their job description has to change during this time. So, you know, everything could be productive.
Mr. Chair, also, I think, the last time you were here, I think the question was asked, what were some of the employees doing? And I think you said they were painting.
One of many things, yes, sir.
But I stopped by one park the other day, there's broken benches out there. There's rusty places where the kids would use the slide-through tone, and if a kid was to get on one of those things out there right now, I know that they would get cut, scratched, and everything else. And this bench that's rotten, it's been that way for the last six months, apparently nobody has even looked at it, you know. And these are the things that I'm concerned with, you know, if they, if they are doing anything, what are they actually doing? I know you said painting, but I'm having a problem with that painting issue. You know, when there's other maintenance out there that needs to be done, and when I can walk out there and go take a look, yeah, there's a sign out there that says do not enter, but I did go out there and look to check for the painting, and I know ain't no paint been out in the last five years.
Which park was that, Mr. Miller?
Miller Park. And I do have some pictures I can file with to you and Mr. Brown.
Miller Park is, you know, as was discussed earlier, it's a part of a big plan to make a big change there, and, you know, it certainly is not one of our top peak condition parks, and, you know, we recently did some work at Jones Creek to renovate that playground. You know, I would love to go in and do the same thing there, and it does need a total redevelopment on the playground.
But, I mean, but right now, Miller Park is not gonna be revamping the next year or so. If it's opened up, I would be afraid to think about opening up Miller Park for the way how it looks right now.
I can promise you, it'll be worked on very soon.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Martin, I think if I'm reading this right, the facility's now closed, and then you've listed them down there, and then the facilities that are open, obviously, there's more closed than opened. But, you know, like you were saying, early, and obviously, we're going through winter and it's cold, people are not gonna be out there, I don't think, I don't know that much about the department and how many people are out there, but I didn't know if you wanted us to kind of choose what we wanted to reopen from that now closed, if we wanted to do that, or if we want to wait till Mr. Brown contacts Mr. Davis to see.
I would recommend that.
To see, because there's no doubt our numbers are spiking everywhere. They are spiking, because I follow along with his graphs and numbers. And now we got schools possibly going virtual again, I'm not sure about that.
They're going virtual.
So, you know, as much as I'd like to open some of these up, I just don't know if, it may be time, but I don't know that this, the opening these up are actually gonna keep your employees busy, because this is just on your own.
Oh, yeah.
Now, the other, as far as, you know, the games and the concession stand, and, you know, your facility after-school programs and that type of thing is more where your employees land at, but I just don't know as far as what we're gonna do with that department, with the employees.
What, you got fourteen employees, Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
And I, you know, and I know that they are, they're willing to work, there's just nothing there for them to do right now, because it's a whole department shut down.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct, very, very accurate to say they're willing to work.
Yes.
You know, they didn't ask to be shut down.
Exactly.
You know, they've asked, you know, to do whatever they can do to help. People that normally work in facilities, they're out on the maintenance crew trying to cut grass and things like that. We have other duties that have come about as a result of this. Initially, we were opening, we opened, we did the initial phase of reopening in May. That was their responsibility for a lot of them to go around and check facilities on a regular basis to try and ensure that they were being used in the proper manner. You know, since then, we've gone into this limited usage thing. Now, we have to have someone there anytime someone uses a facility to monitor that usage and ensure that it's being done within the guidelines that were set forth for the use of the facilities. So, I mean, you know, none of them are enjoying having less to do. You know, they've gone from being possibly some of the most overworked group in the county to some of the now that have not much to do. It's not fair to them, I don't think, to call them out for not having, not having anything to do. It's not their fault.
That's exactly right. You're right.
And Mr. Chair.
But I think that's something that this commission board, possibly your board, is gonna have to discuss if we can't get it opened soon. Obviously, there's no revenue coming in there because everything's shut down, and that may have been helping your budget there. But I think that's something we might have to look at, and you're looking at us to make that final decision, no doubt.
Yes, ma'am.
And you've been up here, this is your second time, and we still can't come up with, you know, there may be something we need to talk about in executive session or something as to what we're gonna do with this department, you know, or with some of your employees. And we have, like one of the other commissioners said, we haven't had to lay anyone off because of COVID. A lot of people have gotten sick and had to take time off, and by all means, they need to do that, but, you know, I just don't know what we need to discuss.
Paying out.
Quick question, if I could. Jimmy, you're fixing to do, the board authorized spring sports to start up, which is your busiest season. So without getting into the weeds, too bad, literally, maintenance crews are gonna keep the fields up. Well, let me go the other direction. Really, the only people that won't be doing normally what they do on a regular basis would be the facility managers, right? East End Center, which has had to be open though because of voting, but.
East End Center was continued to be open for water bill payments.
That's true, yeah, it's gotta be open anyway. So really, only you're talking about the Schuman Center and the Iceboro Center.
Correct.
That's two.
And, you know, one of the new duties with this, with the COVID situation too, is temperature checks at the door.
Yeah, y'all are doing those.
I'm having to have one of those, one of those two there at all times to do the temperature checks. You know, if we start back up with spring programs, as the plan is, someone's gonna have to be at the door to do temperature checks at our office for the policy that we have now.
I don't know, and we can go through and do an analysis for you. I think that's probably what we ought to do, is say, okay, who is displaced right now from a normal activity? Because when the spring sports crank up, I'm not sure you're gonna have, I mean, they're gonna run pretty hard.
Be back in pretty much normal mode, like you said.
But when would that be?
Reception of two centers.
What month would that be in?
They're starting registration in February, so.
Monday.
Monday, they start registration.
Registration Monday with programs will begin in February.
This Monday?
Based on the COVID.
Okay, yeah.
Well, based on what y'all approved.
Unless the decision is made not to do that, you know, at the December mid-month meeting, the decision was, the plan was approved to move forward with spring programs, obviously, understanding that, you know, a spike could stop it.
A spike could stop that altogether.
Sure.
But he's getting ready to run up, in fact, that's the other thing I'll mention real quick while Jimmy's here, is he's already running the ad up. Obviously, the registration starts, he has to, and so they'll start to take registration with a revised form, by the way, that Kelly's redoing tonight with some more liability exclusions on there for whatever they're worth. But it is planned, as the board approved at the last meeting, to go forward with spring sports.
You have to proceed, and then you just adjust accordingly. You have to, that's what we're doing everywhere else. You know, we're adjusting based on.
You know, we, you know, we could, I think.
You know, we could, I think, Commissioner Thrift mentioned revenue. I was trying to see what was in, what the Recreation Department is in the budget. But expenditures, you know, there's some people that if we were wide open, that we would be paying referees, and we would be paying score people.
Contract.
That's not being spent.
There's no revenue being produced, but there are also a lot less expenditures. Exactly. A lot more, a lot more of the expenditure is not being done than the revenue not.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification. First, you know, I've always been a strong advocate of the Recreation Department and very supportive. And the F word wasn't fire, it was more of a forlo. Just to clarify for that. But also, Mr. Martin, you know, this isn't, you know, anything against your department, you know. I understand you all didn't ask for this. I mean, America didn't ask for this, you know, the world didn't ask for this. But during this time, we've all had to make adjustments, you know, through your families, through your jobs, through your businesses. Trust me, I've had to make totally different situations with even my businesses that I own from a barber shop who was literally shut down for months. And I was one of the ones who had to help make that tough decision to shut it down. So I get it, you know, and that's why I'm more looking at, instead of using the F word, let's try to come up with a program to make sure everyone's busy. You know, the majority of us in here either own a business or have been in some type of management position where we've had to make tough decisions. We've had to move people around, or we've had to, you know, let people go. I mean, Commissioner Gill, if it's people, in the summertime, and grass is growing, you hire people. But in November and December, when the grass isn't going, you got to make adjustments. So that's the only thing I'm saying, like, we need to come up with a plan to match the phases. We need to come up with some type of benchmarks. Then also, from the employment side, we need to look at and come up with, I guess, a different job description for employees. And I mean, I hear you telling us this now, but we weren't, I guess, we weren't updated for all these months. I didn't know what you all were doing, to be honest with you. But it's, and also, I didn't ask either. So, you know, but I just think we need to have a plan. You know, I understand we're trying to open up for spring. But how about if we do have a shutdown? What do we do? That's the only thing I'm saying. We need to have some policies in place. What do we do during those times? So, but.
They're going to do the analysis and bring it back to us. Now, listen, sir, we've known you for a mighty long time, and this is no question on your integrity whatsoever, sir. But if we were asked from the general citizenry, you know, whether we need to have something that we can report back to them. So just help us out, help us out with that. And Mr. Brown, so y'all do analysis, and that's good. One thing the hospital did was cross-train people, you know. They cross-trained folk to help out in other areas and stuff. So you might, you may be already doing that. But those are the kind of things that this commission is looking for.
Understand.
Okay, all right, sir. We appreciate everything.
Yes, sir.
He has spent a lot of time with us lately. He's already cross-trained.
Jimmy, if you could open up tomorrow morning, you'd open up.
I would open it up, just to avoid this type of discussion, to be perfectly honest with you. And that's what every person that works here says the same thing.
I've heard from a fellow commissioners down there, but it's kind of like, you know, I've always argued about a fire department. What do they do when they're not fighting the fire? They sit there at the office. They don't polish the trucks. They don't polish the engine when something happens, and they have to work. That's what you got in employees. I mean, Commissioner Thrift, you know, I know a good friend of mine that's had to work seven to 12 days straight because people are out at Interstate Paper. And he's saying, well, look here, we can do this, and we don't need those other people in here. We can run it this way.
Oh, no, he's speaking for himself.
No, he's talking about, I mean, he's been, he's a seasoned 30, 40-year employee. So he knows that all of the folks that's out there, so, I mean, I ain't, I ain't got a bit of problem. I've always, I told Joey today, we've used a word around here, and I might have used it, and I'm sorry that I did, it's called non-essential. It's even on my badge, it says essential employee. But there's people that this county's hired that are essential employees. And when you need them, you need them. Now, it's strictly, as far as I'm concerned, you go out there tomorrow and open it up. Now, I would like to see the vaccine more offered in this county before we open it back up, because there's another one. But Commissioner Thrift says, you know, if we want to open up the Gum Branch Park, that's fine. And Commissioner Stevens, if we want to open up the Miller Park and the Briar Bay Park, I don't have a bit of problem with that. But with the most people where you're going to have it at, I think you've done the right thing. And that's try to keep, I mean, the schools, I can tell you firsthand, they're right now virtual. And they may be virtual in Long County before the end of the year, so. And those people live over here, and they travel over there. So, I mean, I think you've done a good job, but you haven't done anything that we didn't ask you to do. So it's right here. If this board wants it changed, then let's change it. I mean, in the morning, or right now, I don't have a bit of problem with it. But I'm not going to sit up here and listen to a little bit of beating up that don't mount to a hill of beams, because you can't even go in the Justice Center over there and get something done. Walk in the building, and I know of everybody that's over there that's making more money than our folks at the Rec Department, and you can't get in there, they'll tell you right now, no, we're not doing that this week. We're doing this this day. And it's put off for weeks and weeks. And that's not, that's not the way it's going to be. I mean, we need to make sure that everybody's treated fair about the thing now. They may not be able to cut grass, and Commissioner Stevens has identified something. You know where it's at, you can address it. But if you don't know about it, and I don't expect you to ride around and shake every door, but you do have people that can do it. I talked to a boy the other day, I didn't realize that you had one working on Saturday and Sunday going down there and managing the pool. But that's got to be done. I mean, you got to go all the way to Midway to check on a private group that's got the pool rented. So, you know, they're doing something worth having to pay the utilities for an out-of-town group to use it. So from me to you, I appreciate what you've done. And if we had the virus cured and the pandemic gone, and everybody was fine, they'd find something wrong anyhow, so let's just move forward. But if you want to open it up, I'm ready to, let's open it up. But I think it needs to be, we sitting right here with a guy that just retired from the hospital, and he can tell you, and Commissioner Thrift's on the board that can tell you that there's still issues out here, or we wouldn't be wearing these damn things across our face right now.
You'll start with that. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I echo not quite what Commissioner Walton said. But, you know, I mean, Jimmy has been before us a lot, and we, we shut the parks down. We did, and we hadn't opened them up. And we told Jimmy to give us a plan, and he brought us a plan. And we, you know, and now we're telling him to give us a plan for what his people are doing while the plan is being modified. And, you know, as Eddie said, if we open up, then we know what they're doing. But we can't open up, because we're in the midst of a pandemic. And, I mean, you just can't do it right now. I mean, and I don't care, I'm not going to vote to open it up for the sake of keeping employees busy. I'm not going to do that. I'd rather them do exactly what they're doing, whatever that is, before I raise my hand and say, yeah, play ball. I'm not going to do that. It's just too dangerous right now.
It is, it is.
And, you know, so if you want to know what they're doing down there, I would go down there. But I'm not wondering what they're doing down there, because, you know, I know they ain't playing ball. And the main reason they ain't playing ball is because we hadn't said, "Play ball." And Jimmy just said it. If he could open tomorrow, he would. And if we voted tonight, four to three, or seven to zero, he would open up tomorrow. And they would play ball.
Depending on the vote, either way.
And, you know, what I said earlier, Mr. Martin, and I appreciate everything you're doing, and what your board, and your employees, no doubt. Like you said, they didn't ask for this, but I appreciate everything that they're doing, no doubt, during this time. And I trust you that they're doing what you tell them. On every day, every day it might be something different. You know, we're in a pandemic, and sometimes you just got to do things that you may not be used to doing. But I'm sure you're not having any problems with those guys or girls, you know, in doing what you've asked them to do. You know, just to try to keep their job, by all means. That's right, and I trust it. You're giving them.
If there were some job that needed to be done outside the Recreation Department, I'm sure they would be willing to do that.
They'll step up to it.
All they need to do is be identified.
Yeah.
Several paralegal offices, several departments have been quarantined.
And I believe it's going to get worse as we.
It is.
Wondered what they did during that two-week period. I didn't. They shut down because of the pandemic, Recreation Department. Same with the Tax Commissioner's Office, same with NASA's Office, same with the Lenders. Same with any county office, any city, a city department shut down. You know, I mean, you want to say, what are they doing now that they shut down? They shut down. It's all going pandemic.
All right, thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you. Just move forward, sir, with the plan.
With the spring.
Yes.
With the spring plan. You can take applications tomorrow, Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You want to last, Jimmy?
Oh, that's right.
I almost last.
Yeah, Mr. Rickerson. Happy New Year to you, sir.
Happy New Year. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the commission. I've got a couple of documents here for you, and I hope you've got copies of them already. One is a addressing manual, and one is an addressing ordinance. And I'll start with the addressing manual, the thicker one. This is a manual that was developed by the county and with, under a contract with the Coastal Regional Commission. I think y'all started.
We didn't do the whole manual copy for them, Jeff.
Oh, you didn't do the manual?
No, we didn't, we don't have that.
Well, the ordinance that I've provided to you references the manual. I mean, you'll be given a copy of the manual. The Coastal Regional Commission put this together under contract for the county, and it provides standards for issuing new addressing and naming new streets as part of new development in the county. In addition to that, I think the contract provided for Coastal Regional Commission to geocode all the addresses in the county and to set up a system for issuing new addresses going forward. So the addressing ordinance that I provided you updates your current addressing ordinance to enact the procedures and standards that are set forth in the manual. Basically, what your, this takes your existing addressing ordinances that have been in place, both in Chapter Eight and Chapter Thirty-Six of your code of ordinances, and consolidates them all into Chapter Eight of the code of ordinances. It sets up a addressing coordinator, which is your GIS analyst. I think that's a new position y'all created recently, works under Joey. And so that person will be in charge of maintaining the addressing system in the county. And there also will be set up a technical committee, which also, when an issue comes up in the county that needs to be looked at, that technical committee can provide some advice that can be rendered back to the analyst, if need be, to the commission to make decisions about naming streets or our system. So I present this to you, it's about, it's about eight pages of red line material that just provides the, pretty much the framework for how addressing should be done going forward. I would like to bring one thing to your attention. If you look over on page, I hope these, your pages are numbered.
They're numbered.
Page six, subsection four, historical districts. I was looking at this today, looking at this one more time, getting ready for this meeting. And provides for a, something I don't think is necessary. I talked with Hunter Key at CRC, he didn't think it was necessary. I talked with Winston Poon over at the city, and they didn't think it was necessary. It provides a difference in the way historical structures and historic districts would be numbered on the building. It really is kind of odd, I don't understand how it got into the model ordinance, but we really just don't think this is needed. So I more recommend that if you consider this ordinance, that you delete that number four there. It provides for historic buildings only and historic districts, designated historic districts. You don't have any, but we just don't need to even let that become a possibility. That you have, instead of having a normal-sized lettering like you have on other businesses and residences, it provides for historic buildings to have a plaque that has one, one and a half by four inches. That's about that big. I mean, that, nobody's going to see that, it's pretty much useless. So we recommend that we just take out that number, subsection four there, and make historical structures, if you do ever have a historical district, they would have the same size numbers as every other building, just as a, that's just practical, common sense. So I'd recommend that if you consider this, that you take that number four out of there. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about this. I know this project, Ken has been working on it for multiple years. But if you adopt this ordinance in the coming months, we can move forward with implementing it. I will say that I've also got this ordinance going through the city, City of Heinzville now. And in addition to the manual, there's a little bit different. City manager worked with CRC to kind of tweak it to fit their needs, but they're adopting the very same manual that you would have. And if you adopt this, or when you adopt this, we're going to take it out to all the smaller cities, the six cities, and they will adopt yours by reference. So everybody in the county will be using the same manual. And I think the original purpose of this, Joey, was to implement the next-gen system, which is, makes, which enhances your E911 capability. And it really, it helps with the preponderance of new, everybody uses cell phones now. Landlines are becoming much less prevalent than they used to be. So this next-gen system will help to adapt to the use of cell phones. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about the ordinance or the manual. And I'd like to ask you to consider this at a future meeting.
Okay, sir. Commissioner Stevens?
Between Mr. Brown and you, we had a situation the other day out here on the road, an emergency situation down off of King's Road. And it came up on our alert system, it says 21 King's Road. But the address that we were actually looking for was eight, eight-something King's Road. And who is actually responsible for making those changes, or who do we?
Perfect example. It would go, that would be an issue that should be addressed by the technical committee to try to rectify what's needed. And as Jeff said, if it takes some kind of board action to bring it back to the appropriate board, whether it's the City Council or County Commission, wherever that occurs.
Because, I mean, it was a sad situation on the end, but that's something I, I do recall that one real good.
And just like the situation where you've got some, where maybe a city annex is out into the county, and so the address changes in that, and you may have some redundancy or some metering that's off, that's where that technical committee will step in too, and take a look at those anomalies and come back. Usually, it's an internal fix, you know.
Yeah, we have Three King's Road in Liberty County.
That's something that we do need to, that one, I recall that one real well. We do need to take a look at that one somehow or another, whatever needs to be done.
Jeff, let's probably do mid-month, February.
Mid-month, February?
Yes, sir.
Heinzville is looking at this again on Thursday, and I think they're expecting to take action at the January 27th, so you'd be kind of in line with them.
Okay, all right. Thanks, sir.
Right, thank you.
Administrative report.
I'll be real quick, sir. We, just a reminder, as of right now, we've got the Head Start groundbreaking scheduled for later this month. I think y'all have got that on your calendar. That's on the 29th at 11 o'clock, and there'll be some invitations sent out for that. We're developing that program now. Right now, the Islands Fire Station ribbon cutting is set up for the 22nd. That's at 10 o'clock in the morning there. Due to some COVID things that are happening around us right now, internal to some of our departments, we may have to just only hold that in an external environment and not allow station entry. I'll know some more about that tomorrow, that we've got going on, that's happening right now, as a matter of fact. But so, but right now, those are on the calendar for that. Just a reminder that I think you got a notice of that employee appeal to schedule. Just a reminder that I think you got a notice with that employee appeal that's scheduled for 3:00 before the mid-month, and that's time-sensitive. I know there were some conflicts there, but by your policy, that has to be scheduled within so many days of request. And so, that date barely gets us under that cover, what's required by policy. So, we're pretty much locked into that date. Trent mentioned the safety projects to you. And then, left at your desk, all of you should have something that Crystal provided, which was a final report of the census count there, where she mentions that in her count, 71% completed it there in 2010. And I'm looking for her number. Around that same number. I think it was like 71, 72%. But anyway, a final report from her is included. The other thing that's important to look is that new revised timeline that's in there on the Bureau timeline, on when that count's delivered to the local communities, because along that same period of time, there's a certification by the state legislature that's going. There'd be a special session convened, if it doesn't happen, before they get out, where they will officially adopt the census number and then call for, not necessarily reapportionment, but call for reassessment statewide of the congressional and state districts. And that will be the time that we'll get the data, obviously, and start looking to see if we have to go through and do a reapportionment in our districts. So, I want to provide that to you. Once we get the final numbers, you know, we'll get a final report from her also, to be able to do. So, you know, I think in a COVID environment, it turned out pretty well. And I think after the door-to-door counts are put on there and the follow-up, it's going to get even better. So, I think we'll be good there. Only other thing, Mr. Chairman, is, well, a couple of things. We did have the first case. This actually came late this afternoon from DPH for the new COVID-19 variant, that new strain. They're calling it the B-117 variant strain. It has now showed up in Georgia. We've had several cases now that have been reported, so as of today. So, that's not necessarily different or more sickly virus, just a faster spreader, easier to spread, it looks like. And then, the other thing, if you could, take a look at your calendars. I know we had talked about trying to set a couple of dates for the planning session. And I probably suggest, if it's okay, that we think about doing that here instead of going to the airport conference room, so we can distance a little bit and space out some, and be able to record. I think we need to probably do that. And I know we're going to have some folks, some department heads, we want to bring in for you to talk about. For instance, Trent with the Convenience Centers is a good example, but we'll do an agenda for that. But we need to set a couple of dates if we can.
When did you want to try to do it, this month, Joey, or next month?
No, we're actually usually look at doing it in February. You know, y'all talked about doing two half-days to try to do that this time.
This reapportionment, Joey, could change the commission districts. Now, the last time that we had the reapportionment, they didn't notify anybody in here that they'd changed the districts, did they? Who did they talk to?
You will decide, basically what will happen is, once we, once that census is certified in March, then that file becomes available, the census data file, and so we'll download that onto the GIS system, and we'll actually be able to take and manipulate that data. And so, we'll be able to determine what certain ratios are inside the district.
So, the last one was what year?
It would have been after 2010. It would have been 2011.
2011. Well, see, my district changed considerably, and nobody knew anything about it till I went, actually had to go to the City of Heinzville to get the GIS map, and then I went over here to, well, actually to Glenda's office, and then they printed it out, and you could see where it was at, but it changed. I mean, the geographic area was totally different than where it was at now. So, you picked up about 250 to 300 more people.
So, you got to be, you got to be as close as you can get to the one-to-one scenario. And the deviation in that, they give you a certain deviation factor locally. I think it's no greater than 10% deviation. So, in other words, each district's got to be balanced, basically.
It was pretty significant. I mean,
By the same token, the state, the state and the congressional districts can't be any less than 2% out of whack. I mean, they are very tight. They give more, they give more flexibility. I've actually got them on the slide for Liberty next week or this week, but, but yeah.
It's strange how it crossed Commissioner Gillard's district and crossed Commissioner Frazier's district and went into, when it went across veterans in there and all those new homes that drive and build.
To be honest with you, I used to tell people, I thought that was Commissioner Franks' district.
No, it's.
I know. That's what I'm saying. At first, it made sense to me.
So, it changes considerably down. It'll go, I mean, hers could probably change, and Commissioner Stevens. Of course, I don't know where Marion's could go, except for probably go, come closer to.
What Marion would do is wait for me to pave a road, and then here moving.
Always be on the lookout. If you're going to do a road somewhere, make sure the census is already in before you do it.
Y'all, the week of the 22nd of February.
That's right.
February 22nd?
Y'all want to look at that week? I know Wednesdays were tied up with the COVID. Things I think we'll still be doing, but. Do you want to look at Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday of that week?
22nd of February.
That's the week.
Last week of February. You want to do two days back-to-back?
You don't, it's any way y'all want to do it. Whether you want to do it one day in February, or do?
I'm on a different shift, starting yesterday, so.
You don't know what your schedule is that week?
I had to send it to you.
I'll be on day shift.
You'll be on day?
Well, I mean, and you can.
I might be on long off now.
You can wait until March if you want. I mean, it's totally up to the board.
I apologize. I literally just got on the shift.
That's what, that's what.
Max said he'd be on day shift anyway, so.
Yeah.
The whole week of the 22nd. Yeah.
Monday through Friday.
Do we want to look at the, of course, you got a commission meeting on the 2nd of March. Look at the 4th or 5th?
Maybe that.
That week. And we'll look at your calendar, Commissioner Frasier.
February, February, 4th or 5th?
Let's get with the calendar and look at the 4th and 5th.
Oh, March 4th or 5th?
That would be March.
March.
By March now.
Okay.
Off that Thursday.
I seen you on the. He's up on the 4th.
Working day shift that, well, graveyard that Friday.
That's all you could do.
That afternoon.
So, you can hang with us till noon on Friday, maybe.
That's possible.
At the Thursday, you might not want to come back.
Commissioner Frazier, you don't know what yours would be?
I have to.
Well, until, let's look at the 4th and 5th.
You have the big sheet up there, right?
And just put them back-to-back.
I'm on a shift. I worked last night, Monday night.
All right, so that would have been January 4th. You worked graveyard last night? That you'd be off for the, well, that's the weekend.
That'd be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday night? Or I'd be Monday through Thursday day, right?
Yeah. Be day.
Days, right before my long off, right?
So, you move shift for media now?
Go figure.
Yeah. We thought we had that.
Right.
So, will there ever be a time that y'all are off at the same time?
It would be a weekend. We'd have to look at it to.
We'll work it out.
Yeah.
I know when Mr. McCuyver was here, and him and Marion, they was both working, and we never missed a beat.
They'd swap around and carry on.
We never missed, we never missed a beat.
That's right.
And make it happen.
Why don't we look at the 4th and 5th?
Tonight, I redo the schedule.
Yeah, okay.
I forgot, but you're right.
Tentative.
See, he's just flopping stuff with people.
Lady's going to provide the meals too.
That's totally fine.
Kind of say, look, man, just hold the 4th and 5th.
4th and 5th?
4th and 5th.
We're going to look at.
Tentatively.
4th and 5th.
I'm going to go ahead and book this room.
March.
March.
I think I can make that any day between eight and 12 at night. I don't know. I think me and you, we can make that.
Yes, sir.
Whatever y'all want to do. Totally up y'all. Generally, we generally start at 8:30 or something like that.
8:30? 8:30?
Oh, I don't get out of bed till eight.
We ain't skipping a beat in here.
We can do 8:30 to 1:30 or something like that. That way, you can have a light, you know, have a lunch and then keep working.
Joey, when, they're going to do this renovation up here?
Yes, sir. In fact, I talked to him last week, and they were due, he had told us, you know, 10 to 12 weeks. That's how much those woodworkers are booked out. So, he told me last week that he should be ready to start sometime, either next week or the week after. And I've already found somebody too that can do the wood that's got to be done on the podium behind it, because he's got to do that work. Somebody else has got to do that work.
Please hurry up and get it done, because I'm getting sick and tired of justice.
You all got this, Chairman. We, I will tell you, without saying too much in detail, we're impacted by COVID in a couple of departments right now. And some of our other governments are experiencing some things right now that we may have to cover and help cover for, but we're working through that right now.
So, for the good of the order, Chair, Attorney, Mr. Chairman, second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we are.